Oh, I'm the moment of silence tonight. You want to do the moment of silence?
Madam Mayor, it's 6:02 and we are live.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Back wall.
Lake Worth regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Maliga is absent. Commissioner Christopher McVeigh, he's on Zoom.
Is unmuted and here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Here.
Commissioner Reynaldo Diaz.
Here.
Thank you very much. Mimi May is going to lead the invocation.
Sure. All right. We have a moment of silence. To pray for someone other than ourselves. And to hold our dear city. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
By the United States of America.
Over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, very good. Okey doke. Are there any additions? We do have a change in the agenda. Presentations D and E will become presentations A and B, and the others will just bump down the line from there. So the first proclamation, oh, we have to, do we have a vote on the?
Well, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I did want to announce, even though I did send out a revised agenda, it was this morning. So I did want to announce that a proclamation declaring May 10th to 16th, as National Police Week was added, and that will be presentation C.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first proclamation is the proclamation as National Public Works Week. Some of the hardest working people in our city, our staff here?
Yeah, we have staff here.
Okay, great. Raise your hand if you're staff, so we can thank you personally. Really. Seriously, everyone loves to complain about it, but oh, boy, do they do work hard. Okay. Whereas, public works infrastructure, facilities and service are of vital importance to the health, safety and well-being of the people of this community. And whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and services such as water, sewer, stormwater management, streets and highways, public buildings and grounds, parks, solid waste collection and waste processing. And whereas, the quality, safety and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works personnel. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas, the American Public Works Association has selected advancing quality of life for all as its 2024 National Public Works Week theme. Public works professionals advance the quality of life by providing an infrastructure of services and transportation, water, wastewater and stormwater treatment, public buildings and spaces, parks and grounds, emergency management and first response, solid waste and right-of-way management. They are what make our communities dynamic places to live and work. And whereas, public works contributes to advancing and enhancing the quality of our life, no matter where we live in the world, public works professionals provide essential services that lead to healthier, happier and more vibrant communities. Now therefore, I Betty Rush, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim May 19th to the 25th, 2024 as National Public Works Week, and I have signed it and the clerk has sealed it. Thank you very much. Do you want a picture? You want to go? Yeah.
You want to take it, Ashlyn? I did just want to mention and thank everyone because good luck trying to find a harder working public works department, anywhere.
All right. Who do we have here from the beach department? There they are. Come on up. You look pretty beachy, living in Margaritaville. A proclamation, whereas the beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Lake Worth Beach represent a world-renowned recreational resource. And whereas, the city of Lake Worth Beach residents and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities. And whereas, the aquatic environment has dangers, particularly rip currents, that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards. And whereas, for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate as the commencement of the busy summer season begins. And whereas, the city of Lake Worth Beach residents and visitors alike must remember to learn to swim, swim near a lifeguard, swim with a buddy, check with the lifeguards, use sunscreen and drink water, obey posted signs and flags, keep the beach and water clean, learn rip current safety, enter water feet first, and wear a life jacket. Now therefore, I Betty Rush, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim May 20th to 27th, 2024 as National Beach Safety Week, and I have signed it and the clerk has sealed it. And I want to, come on up, guys. The work that, it's one of those things where it's, you're looking, 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 and then there's an emergency and you fix it. So we are very grateful and we would like to take a picture with you.
How do you like the new towers?
They're amazing.
Are they good?
I think they're, what's better about them?
Probably four, three foot higher, bigger on the side. Better ventilation. Roundness.
Who knows? I think.
They fall now.
No way to see. That would be nice.
On board. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
A rope?
With a rolling thing down the ramp?
Yeah. Not a rope, a rope. That's what I.
Go in the water?
Oh, it's fabulous. You know, it's actually pretty serious. All right, now we have the PBSO crime stats update from Captain Bear. Good evening, Captain Bear.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I am back and I brought backup this time.
I can see.
I have my boss.
I feel very safe when this happens.
Awesome. I have my boss, Major Brandon, and then I have Lieutenant DiImperio and Sergeant Hernandez, who work for Captain Foley. I'm going to defer my first slide to them. Captain Foley was invited to speak tonight on behalf of the upcoming mobile response team. We put him in with mine because he had a prior engagement, and now something else unexpectedly came up, but he sent his lieutenant and one of the sergeants that's going to be running one of the mobile response teams.
Oh, great.
When we get to that next slide, I'm going to turn it over to them for a brief presentation within my presentation, and then I'm sure you guys have questions for them. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant DiImperio.
Thank you, Captain Bear. Lieutenant Rob DiMarzo, PBSO for the record, and with me is?
Hi, my name is Bernie Hernandez, Sergeant Mobile Response Team Behavioral Services Division.
So yeah, so the sheriff's office, we're in MOU with the healthcare district. We're in a pilot program that just began for the MRT program. We have one team right now. What the MRT program is going to be, it's going to comprise of, we're going to have a detective along with a clinical therapist, a peer specialist or a case manager. Those three will ride in an unmarked vehicle together. The vehicle will have a single cage guard in the event that law enforcement has to conduct Baker Act. What the MRT unit is going to be responding to is going to be helping out road patrol with your high utilizers for those that are in mental crisis, those that are high utilizers for drug and alcohol abuse, to help out road patrol and, you know, so they're not tied up, so those calls aren't tying up road patrol resources. We're going to be responding to those, and with the partnership with the healthcare district, the goal is to provide long-term care to help these individuals. These individuals are not criminals. We're not looking to Baker Act right away. That's not our goal. Our goal is to find long-term care, so they're not, you know, having to call to the sheriff's office all the time when they're in crisis. We're also going to be, anything that has to do with juveniles that are in mental health crisis, we're going to be responding to those as well. So any schools within the sheriff's office jurisdiction right now that are private or charter due to the school district having their own police department, but they are aware of our program. I have monthly meetings with them in regards to it, and, you know, down the road, hopefully they'll be partnering up with us too. So right now, we have one team. We're in the pilot phase. Like I said, we have an MOU with the healthcare district that's active. We, so right now, we got Sheriff Bradshaw has given us another allocation. We are in, actually this week, we are interviewing for that second, that second position. And we also have federal grants as well. The federal grant that we are applying for, that's, we're in the process of, you know, applying for that grant, we're in hopes of getting two more positions, so that'll be four teams. So with that being said, once we get the four teams, we'll be able to start our pilot program having one team per region. There's four regions in the agency. You've got your east, your north and your south and your west. I did that incorrect. Lake Worth is part of the eastern region. So that's our goal. So every region's covered. Long-term, our goals are to have 20 teams that will cover the county 24 hours, and that would be five teams per region. So we already are getting, we're starting in the western region. That's just based on some statistical data and then what we can manage right now with, because we only have Sergeant Hernandez, one detective and a case manager that's employed by the sheriff's office. But it's, you know, I can foresee within the next few months that we'll have the four teams. That way, every region has coverage. Also, the long-term plan is, once we have our full teams, is to get the other agencies on board. Maybe they can provide a detective, and then we'll be able to help them as well. We'll get more manpower that way. The healthcare district has been very helpful. They're very easy to work with. They're in the process of hiring therapists, peer specialists as well. So the program is moving on. It's just, you know, it's a brand-new unit, so, you know, we have to go through our growing pains and our learning curves and all that. And so far, we've got a few cases and some success stories. And, am I missing anything? This project, we spun it up in November. It actually got brought up by the, you know, the sheriff saw the need for it months ago. I came to the unit in October, so we started in talks with the healthcare district in November, and we're already going to have four teams within the next few months. So it's moving along and we're excited about it. The community needs this. I think, you know, once, once we get a lot of buy-in from our road patrol, the community itself, it's just, it's going to really take off. So we're really excited about it. And any questions?
I have a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. Okay, is Lake Worth Beach going to be in the first team?
Well, I, right now.
Are we being served, I guess, is the question?
You will be served, right? Once we get our four teams, yes, they'll be served. Because right now, we're in the western region based on what we have personnel-wise, what we can handle.
Any idea when our little town will be serviced?
So we'll have four teams within the next few months, so as soon as we, within the, you know, few months. It will be this year. I guess we can't give you a definite until we actually get those allocations, but I know that there is a need, but honestly, it's county-wide. It's not, it's everywhere. There's a need for, you know, those that are in mental health and have substance abuse issues. It's a county-wide pandemic. I mean, it's not going to get any better as a, you know, so it's just going to be more busy.
That's like an optimistic attitude. That's, it's true. And so the cars, the vehicles that will be used by the team will not take our vehicles, will not take road vehicles off, correct?
That's correct.
That's kind of the point, one part of the point is to free the, okay.
Yeah, these vehicles are assigned to the Behavioral Services Division, to the MRT unit. Those will not be taken from road patrol at all.
Okay. And my last question is, I'm sure part of your, you know, getting this all together is finding out what kind of backup services there are in the county, and I'm wondering how encouraging that's been to find, you know, for, here you've got, you're doing this mobile response, what happens next? Have you found that there are any services in the county for folks who are really in need?
Yeah, so the healthcare district is handling all the clinical side of it, and they're going to be doing all the follow-up and long-term health, long-term care. And we also, you know, we also are in discussions with, you know, all the other resources throughout the county as well. Sergeant Hernandez has reached out to the VA, and who else have you talked to?
So just to elaborate a little bit more on that, everyone we presented to about mobile response and what, how effective it is with the few cases we worked out west, where they've been very productive shortly. We have, we have from court services to the jails, everything is on, we're working out procedures for the jails so that when they do get released and they have that moment of clarity of getting back on the street and falling back into the drugs or to the criminal aspect of what they do, we're going to snag them right there at the back door.
So the follow-up?
Take them right to the healthcare district, and if the healthcare district can't immediately provide a service there, we do have a running list of services and facilities that are working with us and providing services when the ball's dropped somewhere else.
That's great. No, this is, gosh knows, it's needed. Anybody else?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Hi, Chris, yes, do you have a question?
I do have a number of questions, if I could do that. So bear with me on this, because this is an issue that, as I'm sure PBSO is very well aware, and our commission is certainly aware, we have a lot of need, and I would extend from your list of mental health and substance abuse and perhaps vets to homeless in general that may not be in any of those other categories. We have lots of need, and the concept of some sort of mobile response team is certainly a piece of what we need. Couple questions. Could we get, as a city, to help with our planning of our resources? Could we get a written description of the program, preferably as soon as possible of all the pieces? Because of course, in a verbal presentation, it's pretty hard to get into much detail, but I would appreciate that if you could get that to the city manager as soon as possible, that'd be great. What is your approximate cost? And that might be overall cost, or it might be cost per team? Do you have any numbers on that?
I don't have those approximate numbers, but this is coming out of the sheriff's office budget. This is not going to be coming out of any contract city budgets. This is coming out of the sheriff's office budget and the healthcare district budget. So as far as the cost, it's not going to affect the city of Lake Worth's budget. It's not going to affect our other contracts, like Green Acres, for example, or Lake Park, our other city contracts. This is coming out of the Palmage County Sheriff's Office budget. The clinical side is coming out of the healthcare district budget.
And grants.
It's our partnership.
And federal grants.
So it's totally benefits, it's going to be totally beneficial to everybody at the sheriff's office, you know, police, you know, jurisdictions.
Thank you very much.
No, I was, I was not done, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
A couple more. I appreciate the indication that it would not be a cost to Lake Worth or to any other community served by PBSO. However, when you say that it's coming out of Sheriff Bradshaw's budget, Sheriff Bradshaw's budget comes from all of us. So somehow or other, that money has to come from somewhere. And that's where I think it would be helpful in that written description, to give us some idea of the cost and where that is, you know, in detail getting funded. And a related question is, what is the duration of that funding? Since it's coming at this point, I understand, out of, you know, basically Sheriff Bradshaw said, we need to do this. What happens if in a year or two years, there's a change and somebody says, well, we don't need to do this? What is the longevity? What is the funding longevity?
I'll have to defer that one to my captain. I mean, that's a little above my pay grade, those questions. I know in my experience that we've had programs and we keep moving forward and growing our programs here at the sheriff's office, so I don't foresee mental health going away. Neither do I see drug abuse and substance abuse going away either. So this is a program that we need. I'll give you an example. This started up in LAPD in about 1994 was their pilot program. They have a full teams. They have a whole model, and, you know, they're obviously a bigger city. They're a little ahead of Palmage County from the 90s, but this is a nationwide, this is nationwide, the mobile response team, this is the way of policing, you know, is going to, to leave, to take the pressure off the road, road patrol, so they can respond to your violent calls, your criminal calls, you know, calls that police need to go to. So I don't foresee it going away. I'm not, like I said, I'll defer those questions to my captain and as far as budgets as well. And like I said, one thing I did mention was, some of the funding is also grant-funded through the federal government, so that's all I can answer on that.
I appreciate those answers, and I do understand, I happen to be in LA at the moment, and have seen LAPD vehicles around and wondered about that. I guess that comes back to the written, in terms of our planning as a commission of how we might want to dedicate any resources we have, we need to know, you know, with some precision, some of these kind of questions. What exactly will be done, duration of it, duration of funding, solidity of funding, so that we can plan if there's anything missing out of it or if we need supplemental things. So I appreciate your patience and look forward to any written materials that you can get to us, and thank you for the program.
Thank you.
That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. May?
Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys being here. I appreciate you explaining your, the program, and I do understand it's a pilot and it's getting off, it's getting off the ground, but it does sound like you have a model, you know, out in Los Angeles to go from. I have two questions. My one question is, are you working with the cities that have their own police departments? Or are you just, are you working within the county service area as well as the contracted cities?
So that's a great question. Our long-term goal is to get the municipality agencies on board where they would provide a detective, and we could also service their cities as well. So that will help for, we get more manpower, more coverage to the county, and also assist them.
Right.
That's a long-term goal.
Okay.
That's more towards the end of our three phases that we have laid out, but that is
Okay, no, I mean, I appreciate it not being a first goal, honestly, because they have their own police.
You got to start small. If you start too big, you don't want to fail.
No, and I appreciate that because I know that where the sheriff covers is very important, and it's large, it's a large area, you know, to start with.
Fortunately for you guys, you fall under us, so you.
Oh, we know.
We're special.
We're not, yeah, we got the best. But my other question is data collection. So I have two questions. One, I have data collection, so I'm assuming that there's going to be some sort of data collection so that we can indicate to the healthcare district as well as other services, the need for more services, you know, as this goes along. Is there going to be like a data collection part of this?
Absolutely, and then part of the grant, we have to collect data for the grant.
Excellent.
There's, we already are doing data collection for the small cases that we have.
Perfect.
Yes, absolutely.
And my last thing, and then I'll stop. I just want to hear one of the success stories. Can you just tell a little one?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
So this one might hit home. We have our District 15, which is the Loxahatchee-Grows district. One of the council members reached out to us, I apologize, reached out to the captain, who in turn reached out to us with multiple concerns for her own daughter. The daughter suffers from multiple mental issues as well as financial and everything else that comes with, you know, that happened with COVID. My detective went out. We both met with the mother, and the mother, sorry, the mother expressed all her concerns. We then met with the daughter, who immediately became reluctant. Anytime law enforcement was on the property, she would lock herself in the room and barricade herself in the closet and didn't want any type of contact. We tried everything at that moment to speak to her or to de-escalate the situation just between us two, but we knew it was way above our pay grade. Her mental condition was way beyond gone, and we couldn't get any cooperation out of her. So then we went and took it to another step. We met with the mother, and we asked her if she'd be willing to come with us and obtain an ex parte order, which is a court ordered mental evaluation. The mother was 100% on board. Apparently, nobody had offered that to her in the past. So when we offered it, we literally walked her through the steps, which is a part of what MRT will be doing. We are going to facilitate what it needs to take, to help these families and get them the health and the services they need. So we obtained this risk protection order. We went back to the house, executed the risk protection order with a little fight from her, but she understood. The detective ended up doing a phenomenal job by talking her out of the room without us having to utilize force or go hands-on, to the point where we didn't even have to put handcuffs on her. She was fully cooperative. She herself got in the car, and we drove her over to Neuro Behavioral where their ex parte order was to be delivered. She was evaluated for the 72-hour period. When she was post-evaluation, we met with her at the Neuro Behavioral, and the plan was to take her straight over to the healthcare district. When we got there, we introduced her to the staff, which they in their own receive applause, they need, deserve applause. They're phenomenal. The way they talk to people is as if they're talking to their family member. One, they're not going to coddle you, but they're not going to let you fail. So they started their process, started evaluation, came up with a game plan. Now she reaches out to the detective directly when before she was reaching out to to the county commissioners and filing complaints on her own mother and all a plethora of issues that she had. She reaches out to the detective and has sent numerous thank you. The mother is on speed dial with the detective whenever there's an issue or a concern. She calls her, and just a quick phone call, hey, everything okay? It kind of alleviates all the other issues that were there were in the past. She's reached out to me and sent me emails, who I forwarded to the lieutenant, thanking us for all the services. Apparently, her fear was law enforcement and what they've done and dealt with in the past, which no disservice or no discredit to any of the men and women that go out there to deal with anybody in a crisis, but it's a time crunch. They want to handle business and go on to the same next caller, next issue or next crime. With what we're doing is, we have the time, we have the, we will eventually have the manpower and the services to get them better help and better outcome for the families.
This is so welcome.
And part of, so we're going to be, when we go to a scene or a crisis, we're in plain clothes, we're not even dressed like this. So that whole element is taken out, so the people feel more comfortable speaking, like for that example. So that's also part of our response.
That's wonderful.
Plain clothes, unmarked vehicle, regular vehicle, so.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Diaz?
You guys covered a lot, so I don't really have a whole lot, but this is long overdue, so it's really like nice to hear that it's finally happening. I do have like a couple of thoughts. I do have like a couple of thoughts though. I want to echo, you know, and I'm pretty sure you guys are already do this, it's more like just a clarification. You know, mental health and addiction, obviously such a priority. That's obviously like such a big priority, but also, you know, our houseless community and other issues that we deal with, there's often overlap, but not always. And so, you know, I hope services are extended to them as well. And, you know, the next thing is, this is more of like an open-ended question or maybe a suggestion and that's, it is a pilot program. We're always learning. There are examples out there and, you know, it's not a slight to PBSO, but I'm sure it won't be perfect. I'm sure there might be some void, you know, some needed things. And in that note, like, and we're looking forward to an update later on tonight from City Attorney about 1365 and otherwise potential burdens that we might have to take on as a municipality and things we might have to invest in.
The new homeless legislation.
Yeah. And so, you know, there might be things that we might have to invest in as a municipality and would love to hear, like, you know, your notes from the field if there's a void needed to be filled. Like I would, two things that kind of come off the top of my hand historically, the problem we have in our community is the lack of translators. And then the other thing is, not necessarily a historic problem, but we do have a number of really good nonprofits and groups like our Recovery Hub just down the road that can help out. And if we need like some sort of liaison connector, whatever it may be, just to kind of help facilitate like further future conversations and how to better this service.
Absolutely. We're all about collaborating and, you know, that's what makes everything successful when everybody works together as a community and teamwork and everything. So, yeah, like Sergeant Hernandez is looking for more resources, whatever we can do to help. Obviously, once we get the ground running here in Lake Worth, then we can look at all the resources that you have here as well. Yeah, absolutely. So, sorry, yeah, you brought up the hub. We've actually met with them. We've also met with Compass, right? We're bringing everybody at all walks of life to the table so that we can better serve every person in this, in this community or in this county. We're not discrediting or dismissing anyone. We're bringing them to the table.
Churches too, I would think. The local churches as well, I would think, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. Anybody and everybody. We've also gotten onboard with Food Bank. We've dealt with a couple, a couple of cases where the crisis was, there was no food, which we understand. We got that all onboard. So literally we're to the point where we make a phone call and we arrive and we pick up what we need and provide it to the family immediately.
That's wonderful.
There's no discommunication or time lapse for the individuals or the person in crisis.
Well, this is certainly needed and we great, thank you guys that are actually doing it. Thank the Sheriff Bradshaw. And we can't wait to get you here. We're going to be dogging you to get here.
Please put me to work.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, here, you just give them to me. We have to do this dance. They give them to that. I don't know why they just don't put them here, because it makes much more sense to do that. A little bucket, right here.
All right, I'll try to make it brief.
Wait one second.
I'll give it a couple.
Yeah, if you have a blue card you want to speak, just bring it up now or, you know, before the thing is over. Captain Bear.
I'm back.
You're back.
I'll start with some bad news and then it'll be all good news from there, I promise.
Thanks.
I told you all at the last two crime data presentations, 2023 was rough. We had a lot of, a lot of crime in 2023. We were up in just about every category. It was somewhat expected, but it was also worse than expected.
That's fine.
If you were here in 2022, we had a good year, which was a rarity. We were one of two districts that were down 22 and we were down double digits. The other districts were all up. It seems like we got all of ours in 2023. Most districts were up, I believe all for 2023 as well, but they kind of split it over the two years and we got walloped all in 23. The good news is we're back down again in this year. We're doing really well in all categories but two. The top far-right green arrows, green arrows are good, red arrows are bad. All violent crime is down this year. And then we are up in three categories, business, construction burglaries. We have a lot more construction and there's only five, but that's, that's a tough one and it's to be expected with what we've got going up around the city. We are slightly up in vehicle burglaries and then we are up slightly in stolen vehicles. But we are aware, we're working on it. I've talked about, I think, the last, a couple of the trends. A lot of the vehicle burglaries lately are juveniles and it's tough. We've made tons of arrests, but they get right back out. And then same with the stolen vehicles in particular, and I put it out to the citizen, our security liaisons and such. It's right now the Key Start Hyundai's and Kia's, not the push buttons, but the Key Start, older models. It's all over social media, how to steal them. It's really easy and that is a good bulk of our stolen vehicles. And they're just taking them and, you know, leaving them 10 blocks away and things like that, so.
So they can even, if it's locked, they can still get in?
They get in and you start it with one of the flash drives. You break the column and you can stick a flash drive in there and it's all, I wouldn't even normally say that, but it's so prevalent on social media that.
You're not giving up any secrets.
No, so it's been a real problem. We're actually recommending and I had to Google it to make sure they still had them, but we're recommending the old club-style security because A, they'll see it and they'll know they won't be able to steer it. So if I had a Key Start Kia or Hyundai, I would definitely invest in a club. I don't know where you buy them in 2024, but I'm sure you can get them somewhere.
Amazon. eBay.
What's our plan? The plans, we've been sticking with the plan. We've had a heck of a lot more good years and bad years over the last 16 years. Crime is still, even with the bad 2023, I don't want to forget to mention, it's like half of what it was, you know, pre-2008. And we've even had other years where it was, those numbers were the same. It's just we've had so many good years in a row that we kind of gave back some of our gains, which still not happy, but when you look at long-term, we're doing fairly well, even with 2023. And back in this year, we're doing really well. We're going to continue that two-pronged approach of, you know, serious crime issues, the part one and two crimes as long as, as well as the quality of life stuff, that's been working. That fights the actual crime data and it also helps with the perception of, you know, whether the citizens feel safe and whatnot. Grants, we have four currently going and there's another one Jenna from our grant division is working on for a fifth one. She's been very good to us in steering them our way. We've gotten numerous traffic grants. We just wrapped up the giant DOJ grant.
Giant what grant?
We had the DOJ, the four-year grant they wrapped up last year, which was another factor. It wrapped up in 2022 and we lost some of that, some of those resources in 23. That was a giant million-dollar federal grant, but we've got multiple traffic grants and we've got multiple railroad grants going right now. We work with the Real-Time Crime Center daily. We have numerous cameras around the city with the, with the people calling out stuff to my guys and girls in real time and that's been really effective. We've made several nuisance abatement cases through chronic nuisance. I'm still trying to get a statutory nuisance case again. It's been a while on that, but it's gotten really difficult to get, but we're getting chronic nuisance fairly regularly and it's working. A lot of the businesses are cooperating with us and stopping the activity. My CP street crime deputies, we've got them doing the hotspots with the intelligent-led policing, wherever the hotspots are firing up, that's where I try to direct them when they're not doing their other activities and to cool those off. That's been effective. We work closely with the State Attorney's Office and the US Attorney's Office. You see a lot of the good cases we have going on. We just got a different state attorney assigned. I've already butchered one name tonight. Autumn Garola. She's, she just took over for Jill. So we just got her about a month ago and she works specifically with our deputies and detectives. And then we try to do our special operations whenever we can, the prostitution, the drugs, the traffic wolf packs and such. They're making, they're making really crazy good cases out there. Even with crime up last year, our clearance rates were better, which is a good thing. We've had, we've had crazy stuff going on. You saw that case of interest with the drugs, guns and money from last week. While we were on that traffic stop with unmarked vehicles, we took all that evidence and put it in one of our unmarks and a completely unrelated bad guy tried to knowingly break into one of our unmarked police cars to steal all of that stuff.
He knew it was in there.
Yes. So he's knowingly trying to steal evidence. Now, you know, I can almost see if it was, you know, a co-conspirator trying to help their friend or something, but this was completely unrelated. You know, that, that's.
Got to give an A for effort.
That's a new one for me after 30, 30 years of law enforcement. And we caught him too. But make no mistake, there's, there's a lot going on out there and we are, we are battling I'm happy to announce we have our homeless intervention deputy, Deputy Herzog. There was a little confusion thinking he was somehow under Captain Foley or part of this mobile response team. He is not. He is one of my deputies, works in District 14. He's been there for quite a long time. He knows pretty much everybody. The right person, you know, square peg for a square hole, he's the right person for this job. He volunteered, we didn't assign him, which is important. And I have no doubt he will work with the mobile response team, referring and going back and forth, but he's one of ours. He's here every day in District 14. It's going to be a combo of outreach and enforcement, mostly outreach. We've all learned, you know, you can't wrest your way out of homelessness, especially with the quality of life stuff. So he's going to be primarily outreach and some enforcement. The best part is the accountability. And we've done, you know, district initiatives and such where everybody pitches in with it, with the homeless issues, but it's all going to stop with him. So deputies now know, everybody knows he's, he's our guy to refer people to him and try to really have the long-term solutions for them. Sometimes we've had success stories where it's as simple as getting them a new ID card.
Yeah.
You know, they can't get their stuff out of storage because they don't have ID to prove it's their storage and they, it's just, it's, it's just a cog in a wheel. And just taking them down and getting them a new ID card has gotten some people off of the street.
That's wonderful.
Or gotten them onto a plane or a bus to go home where they want to go, but they don't have ID to get on the airplane.
Or a program. They can't sign into a program if they don't have an ID.
Sometimes it's the littlest thing and a patrol deputy, as I kind of mentioned earlier, has to go to that next call. We don't, he doesn't have time to drive you down to the DMV. Herzog's taking people on Thursdays that need it to the DMV. So we've already gotten several placements and in programs and a couple back home where they wanted to get. So I'm hoping it's not going to, you know, cure homelessness in Lake Worth Beach, but it should make, it should make a good improvement.
Thank you.
Questions?
Ms. May has a question. She turned her light on right away.
Well, I didn't want to be late. First of all, thank you. I really appreciate you coming in and giving us the report. One question first is the, how can we help? What can we do?
That's a good question. You are helping. We, it's mainly the citizens helping, the groups that make the call, y'all see something, say something. We want you to continue to call. I understand it's not always perfect. You don't get the outcome you want. Sometimes even, you know, calling into dispatch on a Friday or Saturday night can be a lengthy experience if we're really busy, but keep making the call. The city works great with us. Like Bryant Park, I hope you noticed, looks a lot better. And we haven't done it by just running everybody to jail. We've done it by working with the city and being very strategic and trying to find those long-term solutions. But, you know, I think Bryant Park looks a lot better than it did last year. We're still working on other spots, the Cultural Plaza, places like that, where we're trying to hit these, these issues from all angles. But yeah, the city, the city staff's been great. Jamie's pretty good.
He's all right. He's all right. My second question is, are you working with the county? Because I know that they were doing some, some, having some meetings and doing some homeless task force stuff. Are you guys participating in that?
Yes, absolutely. It kind of started when John Prince Park had the issues a few years ago. That's when our headquarters, District 1, they have two dedicated homeless intervention deputies. That's kind of where Deputy Herzog's been learning. They come in and help and he pairs up with them on occasion, but I, you know, I made it clear I want him in the city. If he's learning, we'll go out, you know, out in the county a little bit to learn or to make connections with a lot of the nonprofits and such. You know, he's going to spend the bulk of his time here. And they've been coming, the two deputies that do that for headquarters, they're phenomenal and they've been coming in the city long before any of this anyway, because they, they make connections with the homeless community and a lot of the John Prince Park people have come east.
Right.
So it's been really good. And that's where he's learning, you know, all the connections and all the things that the average road patrol deputy might not even know exist.
Right. And the number of beds, is that getting any better?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could use a lot more beds.
Okay.
We, we lost numbers going from the stockade to the new facility, but I haven't been there myself, but I'm told it's, it's a really, really nice facility.
It's nice, but it has half the amount of beds.
But it is a lot closer. So there's pros and cons.
There's pros and cons to all that.
We definitely need more beds.
Okay.
In the county.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any else? Hi, thank you, Captain Bear. Thank you very much. We thank the Sheriff's Office. We, it was a good move years ago to go to the Sheriff's Office. I worked with Lake Worth Police Department years ago and.
Me too.
You too, I know, I remember. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we have one more police proclamation. One more police item. You just bring. We have to go to this ballet of getting them over here. Whereas, in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Palm Beach Sheriff's Office. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently 24,067 law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including 19 members of the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. I remember some of them. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas, 282 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 118 officers killed in 2023 and 164 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty was honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund 36th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2024, as part of National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 10th through the 16th. And whereas, May 15th was designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families and US flags were flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Betty Resch, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim May 10th to the 16th, 2024 is National Police Week and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And I've signed it and the clerk has sealed it. And I have, my niece is a Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office Missing Persons Detective, so I have great pride in Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Thank you very much. Let's have a picture. Now we have Commissioner Liaison reports and comments. Mr. McFoy, do you have a comment or a report?
Very brief, just two items. One, at the national level, I'm happy to report that job growth in the sustainable that job growth in the sustainable energy sector of our society grew faster than overall job growth across our many different aspects of our economy. So that's a very positive thing. And the other is just to say that, again, express my appreciation to Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga for her offer of at least considering the idea of keeping some of our fund money to work on these problems that we've heard some about. And I'm continuing efforts to make sure that we know as much as possible what are options, how they would interface with what other programs are going, the homeless intervention deputy Herzog that Captain Bear mentioned, as well as the pilot program. So thank you for that ongoing support. And that's it.
Thank you. District 3, Commissioner May.
I actually forgot about this part.
It can happen.
I did. I was thinking about everything else that was on the agenda, you know, new girl up here. But I do want to talk about the graduation. So we went to the graduation for Lake Worth Community High School on Friday night. And the three of us were there, as well as Vice Mayor Malaga. And the best part of the, I mean, the whole thing was beautiful. And the parents and the kids, they were so excited. But the best part was the boys. So they, some of these boys, they look like men, right? They're 18 years old, and they look like men. And they came up on stage looking all tough. And then they come across and they shake your hand. And, you know, you say, good job. And they smile, and you see the little boy in them. And that was the most touching part of that entire evening, just to see the child and the pride, you know, of somebody who, that's a tough accomplishment, you know? And for some of them, they're the first ones in their family to graduate from high school. And it was just, it was just touched my heart. It really, it really was amazing. So we did that. Speaking of schools, school is ending May 30th. So two things. One, there'll be a lot more kids out, so be careful driving. Second is, that's going to give me more free time, because I am a teacher. And so I will be setting up some district meetings. The whole city can come if they want, but specifically for District 3 constituents, just to sit and talk and let me hear some feedback. I do love the emails that I've been getting, but I feel like we can communicate better and more. So I'm looking forward to that. And I think that's it. So thank you.
Great. Commissioner Diaz?
Yeah, the graduation was fun. Thanks for bringing up the community meetings, because it reminds me that we are probably very behind on my quarterly forum. And I wonder if maybe we should start with Commissioner May, since she's new, and then keep the process going?
We just had one.
We just had District 3, yeah. We'll just keep it going. It's my turn. It should have been months ago, but yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That was good.
Yeah, they got that back going. We're definitely way behind on that. Other things that happened besides the graduation since last meeting, I of course had my TPA governing board meeting. We didn't really have any budget items or anything coming to us, although there's, in the next couple of meetings, if not the next meeting, we are going to go over what is called a transportation improvement program, the TIP, which is basically our, it's the five, it's what the, you know, the TPA is the municipal planning organization that funds, largely funds a lot of streets and that kind of road infrastructure. And then the TIP program is exciting, because it's like the next five years, what's going to get funded. And I'm pretty sure we have several things in that, right? And so it's going to be voted on, written down on paper, and then we're going to have a schedule to expect more construction. I know that's a sore subject right now, but it's very needed. Another thing that was talked about at that meeting, we actually had a really good presentation from Shared a Road Coalition, which is a group of people who are cyclists. And luckily, we don't really have, I think, issues in our community as bad as some of the things that they were presenting about. Like, part of the reason why they were founded was because there was a really major accident that involved eight cyclists that were seriously, seriously injured. And their whole thing is basically to get people out, including electeds, to kind of experience with their experience. And they know that I'm a cyclist. They know that Commissioner McFoy is a cyclist, so they invited, they expressed interest in taking us out to ride, so.
Let us know how that goes.
Okay. Oh, I didn't know that. You're part of the tribe.
Let me know how that goes.
So that's something to bring up. It's really interesting, because, you know, we often talk about road safety, and that's such a, talk about a group that often gets a lot of vitriol throughout many communities is, you know, cyclists and their safety. And they go through a lot. So it's a really important issue, and it's something that is something to talk about, especially when, you know, the other conversation that was brought up by our neighbors from Boca is their divergent diamond, which for the most part, they like. And then some of you might know, starting in, well, it's planned to start in 2029, the construction of converting our 10th Avenue overpass to a divergent diamond. And luckily for us, we weren't the first, because like any good engineering project, it's a continued education thing. And what they found, like in Boca, and what the representatives down there are saying is tremendous improvement for vehicle traffic, a little bit concerning for pedestrians and cyclists. And so, you know, there's, the conversation is still being had on how to improve that for pedestrians and cyclists. And of course, you know, our community is really concerned with the 10th Avenue overpass and how it relates to Lake Worth Middle School. I mentioned in a previous meeting that our education task force is really interested in addressing that and seeing what we can do to either get more crossing guards or maybe reorganize the crossing guards we've had. I sent an email to Captain Bear. I got to respond to him. But we're getting like the traffic data and whatnot. There's likely some room for improvement, for sure, in the meantime, until we get that divergent diamond. And then another thing that was brought up for 10th Avenue, that I hear often from the community is the potential for a pedestrian crossing bridge. And that is something that staff at TPA is actually, they like that idea. You know, there's a realist, there's a bring back to reality moment, that this is not something that would happen in single-digit years. Like, I, you know, hate to be the bearer of bad news, but the first step is, one of the things that we're working on is something called a long-range transportation plan, or LRTP. And that's really the first step on getting funding for major transportation projects. And all the LRTP is, it's kind of, a lot of it can be pie in the sky. And it's saying, you know, over the next 30, 25 years, what are some things that we might want to address? And I think the goal is to, and we're going to submit a list of projects and ideas for this plan, and that might be something that we should include on it. And all it does is it gets the conversation started, so that as the TPA continues to move, they, you know, invest in looking into those ideas and start working towards a funding plan. Moving at the speed of bureaucracy, yay. And so also, since last meeting, I had our Palm Beach County Water Resources Task Force, which was a joint meeting with Broward County. And that is usually, that's not a decision-making board, but it is really, it's generally a good opportunity to kind of take a stand on some issues. And last meeting really stood out, because we had an update from the US Army Corps of Engineers and also the South Florida Water Management District, talking about where we're at on things like Everglades restoration, AKA addressing things like climate change and sea level rise. And there's good information. It's stuff that is tedious. I definitely won't go into, if you're an environmental law nerd like I am, you're probably already fairly familiar with comprehensive Everglades Restoration Program, SERP. But one of the things that really stood out to me, and I really, it was kind of refreshing, is that Senator Geller was there, who he represents down south in Broward. But we had kind of a good dialogue with the Corps of Engineers, where we were maybe a little bit critical about the speed of how they are addressing some of these issues. And, you know, he discussed how, he flat out asked the questions, when is Tallahassee and our state and our governor going to take things like climate change seriously? And we got probably not the greatest response, you know, the greatest response is, well, we bring that conversation up to our leaders. But I was able to bring it down. And luckily, there was kind of misery in company, and I was able to bring it down to the municipal level and highlighted that this is a problem that we're already facing and that we're being forced to find just oodles of money to fix things like stormwater, projects like South 18th, you know, that's a big one for us, where we had to find a million and a quarter, a million and a half to upgrade a pump to help basically a handful of houses that are getting flooded out. And that's just the start of what we're going to be facing very soon now. And, you know, it's good to hear that this is a conversation that's happening, at least at state level, because we've had, you know, as a reminder, our recent utility meeting where we talked about the need to really focus on this fund to start protecting ourselves. Other than that, I think that's, I think I'll leave it at that. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. I have a few things. Two things I want to pick up. It's really distressing to hear you say that the people that have the diamond crossing now are having pedestrian problems, when every time I go up to 10th Avenue North and school's getting out, I hold my breath. It's terrible what those kids have to go through up there. So, and then on the 18th Avenue South, we had a couple of big rain events this week. And on both of them, actually, I was out and about. And I went down to 18th Avenue South just to see what the situation was down there. And the first one, it wasn't bad at all. The first night where we had the big rain, last night, Saturday night, when I went down there, it was pretty bad. It was pretty flooded. I mean, you could get through, but I wanted to say, and this is a kudos, and I wish Mr. Liberty was here, and I want to find out who the worker was. I was just driving around down there looking, and I noticed a city truck. And I thought it was a water truck, but it was an electric truck. And I stopped, and I said, hey, what's going on? And the guy, and I wish I would have gotten his name, was, he had no idea who I was. I was in like a t-shirt, right? He said, he was, there were two transformers had blown. And I just want to say, he was informative, cordial, helpful, really, I was, and he didn't know who I was. It was really great to have like a positive interaction with a city employee out there. And I just want to pass that on, and maybe we could find out who he was, because it was really, I walked away going, oh, that's great. Let's see, went to the, the Palm Beach County League of Cities had a luncheon today, the investment installation luncheon, and where I was re-sworn in as a member of the Board of the Palm Beach County League of Cities. And I'll be on a legislative committee again, which means we go to Tallahassee and beg. We try to be really nice. We all know about the Gulf Stream, which is like so exciting that we have the groundbreaking, and it's getting going, and let's just keep that going. 6th Avenue South, they're working on that now, on the interchange. And I really hope, and whenever it comes up, I want to find out, how do we get to the DOT to tell them about the landscaping? I'm really concerned that it's just going to be not, I want it to be really addressed, that we, even if we have to, you know, get some of our heard and money to do it, because it needs to be beautiful. And that island, between like A and Dixie, there's not a tree on it. It really, we need to juj up the entrance to the city. Tomorrow night, tomorrow night, for those of you that don't have a ticket, there are a couple, people have taken a couple of tickets, and they, I've been told, there's like two extra tickets that I know about for folks to give away. The charrette for the W Motor, the museum project, it's going to be livestreamed, and I'm assuming will be recorded. I hope it will be, yeah. Very exciting program. These people, this developer has, he's doing it right. He's reaching out to the citizens. They're having a charrette. They have like weekly updates. They meet with staff every week. It's, if we can pull that one off, that'll be a great asset to the city. I'm almost done. Oh, I just want to say, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Malaga is not here, because she's in Washington, DC for the Florida League of Cities. They have an agenda, an action agenda. It's like a task force. And she's up there for two days, meeting with our federal legislators. And here's, I asked her, what are you doing up there? And here's what they focused on. And the first one is the PFAS, the PFAS, the tiny little plastic particles that we're finding everywhere, that that's a national emergency and we need to deal with it. The second thing that they're talking about, or trying to talk sense into somebody, is National Flood Insurance Program. I mean, we, especially in our, where we are, flood is certainly something that we need to pay attention to, and they're trying to get a little more participation and help from the federal government. And the third thing is simplifying local government grants. Every time we say, oh, we should have apply for a grant, the staff, because their blood runs cold. Number one, we usually get the notice of the grant a day before or after the deadline is due, which, why does that happen? I'll be, oh, that's a great grant. It was due yesterday. Okay. So, but she's up there, and it's, you know, oh, she's going to Washington. It is not fun. You'd fly up there, you check into a hotel, you get up at 8:00 in the morning, you go to meetings. I mean, thank you, Sarah, for doing it. And I believe that's all I have. One more thing, 6th Avenue, I don't know if I want to break the news, or if you want to break the news about the, oh, I'll do it. I'll do it. That's fine. People are inquiring. People want to know when 6th Avenue South is going to open up. And we really had hopes that it was going to be April of this year, because that's what they said. It's not our fault. It's our, it's not our fault, but it's a, thank you, thank you. Apparently, some of the concrete was a little substandard that they put in there. Them, not us. And they have to redo parts of it? We're looking at August. We're looking at August, if it happens in August.
Three-month delay.
A mere three-month delay. Why should we use 6th Avenue South? It's a disaster. Going to Lantana, going to 10th is a nightmare. And when, but just think, it's like when you have a headache, and the headache goes away, how great it feels. When 6th Avenue South opens up, we'll be so relieved. So don't kill the messenger. Thank you very much. At least it's summer when the snowbirds aren't here. That's right. Okay, so city managers' report.
Yeah, and I guess just real quick to touch on that 6th Avenue South, the bridge situation. I mean, I guess it's a testament to, you know, the CEI, Construction Engineering Inspection. This is why we have those processes in place, to check and do cores on cores like this, so we don't end up in a situation like happened in Miami a couple of years ago. So when they see things like this happen, they're able to correct those situations upfront. So we're not opening a bridge with not, you know, exactly. So a few things for the city manager report. We do have vegetation amnesty going on right now, which our Public Works Solid Waste and Recycling Division does every May. So instead of the typical four yards of vegetation, you're allowed to put out six all month long. We do this ahead of hurricane season, so people doing all their landscaping and everything can put more out the curb, so we can collect more material. And we always remind people, when a storm is coming.
That's not the time.
That is not the time to have all of your landscaping done, because now you don't want things flying around your yard and then putting it all out on the curb and creating a bunch of flying debris. And we do pick all that up ahead of time, but we do cite pretty heavily for that. Also, Mayor, you had already mentioned the W Motor tomorrow night, the charrette. I just wanted to remind everyone again, like you said, it will be streamed live, if you didn't get a reservation for that. The lifeguard tower replacements, two of those are in, the one on the south end and the middle beach is done. On the 30th, we will be doing, which is a week from this Thursday, the north tower. And it will be done after that. So the upper lot will be closed on that day, because of the crane and everything, a portion of that, the north portion. But we are providing the little transportation from the bottom, like we had circled up there last time. So that's happening on the 30th. A week from this Friday, on the 31st, we're having the historical marker event at IA Banks at the cemetery at 6:00 on that Friday, which is going to be a really cool thing. So I recommend everyone come out for that. We're currently scheduling the ribbon cutting for Memorial Park, right there at Hellgrimes Field, which was our CDVG project with the county, which we just finished up. It looks like June 11th is going to be the date. It looks like all of your calendars are clear. So in the next few days, you'll be seeing something pop up for that. And we'll push it out on social media. We also want to make sure that we've got people available from the different teams that utilize that field to attend that event. We'll invite all of our county commissioners and everyone as well who's involved in that program. Congratulations again to you, Mayor, today for being sworn in at the Installation Gala.
Thank you.
Before that, I was actually roaming the Crowe Center parking lot on an FDOT preconstruction meeting, before I could come into that. And that's for the federal, on federal, from 10th Avenue South to 6th Avenue North. That project is going to kick off on June 18th is the construction start date.
Oh, yay.
And we're looking at a nine-to-10-month timeframe on that. And we're looking at a nine-to-ten-month timeframe. I mean, it's like 282 days was the actual construction time. That project's happening this year. Next year, Federal Highway again, picking up where this one ends, so 10th Avenue North, all the way up to Arlington, which is just on the other side of the C-51. The following year, we're picking up where this one's starting, at 10th Avenue South and going all the way to our border at Lantana. So, over the next three years, we're going to have all of Federal Highway redone.
Are they adding bike lanes like they did in West Palm, by any chance?
The issue with that is our typical section, our roadway typical section is different, south of the C-51 than north. So, after you cross over the C-51 canal into West Palm Beach, if you look at that roadway section, you actually have landscape buffers, you have separated sidewalks, it's a completely different typical section. So, we don't have the roadway width in order to add bike lanes and some of the other things. I know we had done a study on many roundabouts and some other things we were looking into, seeing if it was a possibility, but we just don't have the right width to do that. So, that is enough for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the City Attorney's Report. And this is going to be an interesting one. And everyone needs to listen up, because this is regarding the new legislation regarding people sleeping in parks and public spaces, not just parks. And Elizabeth?
Sure.
Teach us.
Well, so, at your last meeting, you all discussed this new legislation. It was brought up by your legislators that this was, you know, in place. It will be effective in October. And what it does is it basically gives a penalization for sleeping or overnight camping in public spaces. It doesn't outright prohibit sleeping in public spaces, so that's something that each local jurisdiction will have to do. You already have codes in your, that prevent that in your beach and park rules, in your code. So, there's nothing at this time that you need to do. There, starting in January of 2025, the residents will be able to sue municipalities and the county for not enforcing the prohibition on sleeping in parks and other public spaces. There will be procedures for that. The county will have to set up spaces for people to go. As you know now, right, the sheriff's office does call for beds and make sure there are beds available. That is consistent with current case law on how to treat homelessness, and looking to make sure there's a place for people to go, and not just taking them to jail. Because municipalities and sheriff's offices have been sued for arresting people, just for the pure fact of being homeless. So, you know, you're kind of in this catch between the legislation and what the courts have ruled in the past. So, the courts are handling a couple cases right now. We're monitoring them to see where they go. And we will be letting you know. Again, the new legislation doesn't take effect until October, so we have some time, hopefully, to see where these court cases land. And we'll let you know how this will kind of play out.
Is there anywhere that you can, that we can speculate? If there's not enough beds for the homeless and someone's sleeping in the park, what happens next? And then, that's a real hypothetical question, but it's going to happen. You know what's going to happen.
That's a very big hypothetical question. And so, in the meantime, we're looking, again, we're watching the court system, and we're also hoping that the county is taking action to do what really the legislature has put in their, in their court to do, with setting up places for camps to happen, for camping to happen. Municipalities do not have the responsibility to do that. It is solely up to the county to designate places for overnight camping. But they can be in a municipality if the municipality is willing to have such a space.
And when you say in the courts, it's being challenged, or are they looking for clarification?
We have not seen any challenges or cases at all regarding this current legislation. There happened to be a case already pending in the court. It's at the Supreme Court now regarding homelessness and arrests for homelessness. So, they have done oral arguments just recently, so we're watching that.
It's crazy. It's crazy. Somebody can sue us, if we've no place to put someone that has no place to go.
You can't arrest the person.
You can't arrest them.
But you can get sued for not arresting him.
Right, you say, yeah, you're right. You're not allowed to arrest them, but you can get sued for not arresting them. And then, what are the damages? I mean, the whole thing is just.
It will, it will be interesting to see how it all lands.
Not our, not our fault, but it's our problem.
Right.
Okay.
That's all I have for you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, now we have, okay, public participation of non-agenda items and consent agenda. The first thing we do is the public participation. When you, when you come up, here's what we do. When you come up, you say your name and your complete address. We don't ask questions, we don't make comments. We listen to your comments, we say thank you, and you sit down. We discourage cheering and clapping and booing. We're trying to keep things civil. I understand there's, you know, an issue that's very emotional that we're going to hear a lot about tonight. But I implore you not to have to, you know, implore you, let's all be respectful and kind and to each other, and just go as quickly and as efficiently as we can. You each have three minutes, and you will be timed by our clerk, who's very, very prompt. So, the first one up is Andrea Trainer. Andrea? Is she here?
She was here.
She's here.
All right, I'll call her, oh, that's fine, I'll call her back. That's fine. The next one up would be Wade Hitchcock. Mr. Hitchcock? I'm batting zero here. He was, he's coming, yeah, he was out, he may have gone to, Mr. Hitchcock, you're up.
Hey, I see you're here. What's wrong there?
What? Ooh, don't step on, don't kick the dog. And after Wade Hitchcock, I'm going to give you like a who's on deck. Ally Jacobs is after Mr. Hitchcock. Mr. Hitchcock, good evening.
My question is.
We don't answer questions, we just listen to comments.
Okay. How do I put this to you?
Name and address for the record, please.
Name and complete address.
Wade Hitchcock, 1506 13th Avenue North.
Lakewood Beach.
Lakewood Beach.
Thank you.
Three citations for parking in the resident parking spot. I want to know, how is that possible if I've already paid and everything? I've had to waste the whole day today trying to get it all corrected.
Well, certainly, Mr. Brown, we'll certainly look into that.
I mean, there's other things, but.
Hey, well, no, that's, if you're right, you're right.
You know, I just want to know.
If you want to write down your phone number, so that.
Yeah, I'll do.
Here, here's your card. Write down, somebody can get, here's a pen, I'll give you both.
That's why we need the stickers.
What stickers? Oh, I know.
The resident parking stickers.
I want to bring back the stickers. I'm annoyed that they're not. You should apologize.
I do.
Okay, good, it's Mr. Brown, because he's the one that's going to follow up on you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. We appreciate that, Mr. Hitchcock. Is Andrea back? Nope, okay. Up next then is, I called up Ally Jacobs, followed by Melissa McKinley.
Hi, I want to save my card.
What?
I want to save the card so everybody will know.
Sure.
Okay.
Just remember your full address. Thank you.
Do I have to save my account as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, hi, everybody. My name is Ally Jacobs. Address 4345 Trevi Court, Apartment 204, Lakewood, Florida. Very short, not going to take up those three minutes. So, as a longtime Lakewood resident, as well of Jewish heritage, I recognize how vital it is that each city commissioner advocate for a ceasefire in Gaza. Your silence will be complicity.
Thank you. I'll take that back. Thank you. Up next is Melissa McKinley, followed by Fern Hassan. Good evening, Ms. McKinley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. It's different to be on this side.
Yeah.
Welcome to the private sector. Anyhow, I want to thank you, Melissa McKinley, 189 East 25th Street, Riviera Beach. I want to thank you for the opportunity to take public comment today. I'm here speaking with you, not behalf of any employer, but just as somebody who likes to experience things by actually going and visiting and seeing them firsthand. I had that opportunity with the Jewish Federation of Palm Beach County in February. They took a group of six non-Jewish community leaders to Israel to see Israel firsthand post October 7. I can tell you what I saw was absolutely horrific. We were able to visit one of the kibbutzes, one of the first ones that was attacked, that was on the southernmost border of Gaza. We could hear the choppers overhead, we could hear the artillery. What was more disturbing is that we could see where women and young ladies and men and babies were pulled from their homes, where they were murdered, where they were raped, where they were kidnapped. 132, or actually, I think it's minus three now, I think we're at 129. Their whereabouts are still unknown. We want to remain optimistic that they're still alive. They are being held hostage. The, I respect the advocacy of the youth in the room calling for a ceasefire. But nowhere in American history, when Americans were actually held as part of those hostages, nowhere have we ever advocated to not have loved ones returned. It's sad that we are at, the state of Israel is at war, and nobody wants to see a war continue. It could be easily resolved by the return of those 129 remaining hostages until that time is, has come. We should not be talking about a ceasefire. We should be recognizing Israel's right to defend itself from the terrorist attack that it experienced on October 7 of 2023. And I do wish for peace for both nations at some point, you know, not nation, one nation and one entity, to be able to resolve this issue and come to peace at some point. But until those loved ones are returned to their families, and we know that they're alive, or we at least know their whereabouts, I think it would be premature to sponsor any type of resolution calling for a ceasefire. And I respect your position in local government, but sometimes it's not necessary for local government to pass resolutions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Fern Hassan. After Fern is Linda Geller Schwartz.
Thank you very much to all of you.
Just give it to me.
Oh, my name is Fern Hassan, 7603 Seifom Court in Boynton Beach.
Thank you.
And I thank you very much for the opportunity to address you today. Like the previous speaker, I, and the fact that I have lived in Israel, I went for three weeks to volunteer in February and March. And during the time that I was there, I met with many soldiers who were injured, with families of hostages, and with survivors, people who are living in hotels right now. 130,000 people right now are refugees in Israel because they cannot go to their homes because a war is being waged on the south and in the north. But what I wanted to say, most of all, is that, I wanted to make this a little bit personal. One of the people that we heard from had a son who was killed. And as with most of the soldiers, they are asked to write a letter to their parents in the event that they do get killed. And so you can imagine, an 18-year-old, you were speaking about looking at these young people, you can imagine an 18-year-old having to deal with their own mortality, and understanding what responsibility they carry on their shoulders. And in one case, this young man was killed, and the letter was read to the people of Israel. And in it, it said that, please, I understand the sorrow you will be going through. I know what is happening in the country. I was proud to serve in the army, to defend my country, to defend my people, but continue. Because if you don't continue and finish the war, and eradicate the brutal terror group that created this whole situation, then my death will have been in vain. And this was, this reverberates all through the country. And this is the first time I've ever spoken in a situation like this. But I will say that I can appreciate that we sit here in Florida, we don't think about an invasion, we don't think about people coming over a border and hurting our families. And to tell you the truth, the people in the kibbutzim didn't think it either. They were very friendly with the Gazans, and they took them to medical appointments, and they invited them for dinner, but it happened. And the reason I say this is because we live in a global village. And what happens somewhere can affect us. And we have to not disassociate ourselves from people who live very far away, and lest we think that it can't happen to us. We had a 9/11. We buried almost 3,000 people. I never want to see that happen on our soil again. But by the same token, I have to implore people to understand that this is not an isolated instance. And when they call for death to America and death to Israel, it's not idle. These chants are not idle. I've, I'm in.
Thank you, that's time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Up next is Linda Geller Schwartz, followed by Nicole Kopich. Good evening.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Linda Geller Schwartz, 6861 Caya DePaz, Boca Raton, Florida. I believe this proposal of a resolution on a ceasefire, or asking you to commit on this issue, is not appropriate really for City Council to consider. You have so many vital responsibilities we've been hearing about tonight in the community, so many important functions, but foreign affairs are not one of them. Just about all the councils in Florida have recognized this. And just a few days ago, one of the only other councils in Florida that had passed a resolution, Doral, rescinded it because there was a barrage of backlash in their community. This would be a very bad precedent, because you would have to prepare to consider resolutions on every other crisis in the world, from Sudan to Myanmar to the Uyghurs in China. All important issues, but not for the City Council. But if you do entertain such a resolution, I would ask you to vote no. Every decent person wants peace. But a ceasefire that does not lead to the release of the hostages, and does not eliminate Hamas terrorists who perpetrated such horrors on October 7, and who have openly said that they want to annihilate Israel and kill the Jews, if that cannot be achieved, then there's no lasting peace for Israelis, for Palestinians, for Gazans, for the world. So, I'd ask you not to consider this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Up next is Nicole Kopich, followed by Arianna Hazem. Andrea Trainer, come back? All right, sorry.
I don't see her going to be ready for her. I don't mind going back.
No, you're up. We, no, you, you can be the next, you're fine, you're fine. You'll be next. I called you already. Ma'am, Nicole, you're up.
My name is Nicole Kopich. My address is 464 Autumn Trail, West Palm Beach, 33410. I'm here as well to speak about the call for a ceasefire in Gaza. I would like to first point out that as of May 14, current statistics show that there are about 35,000 deaths of Palestinians in Gaza, as opposed to about 1,500 of the Israelis. So, just pointing that out in terms of numbers, since numbers were brought up previously. Also, I do find it inappropriate to continue to bring up me and some of my fellow people who are here to speak's age. Just because we are younger or in a different age bracket does not mean our voices are not meant to be heard, nor should they be shared. In terms of speaking of the ceasefire, it is an issue that does impact, of course, on an international level, but as well as your constituents who are here in the city and the county of Palm Beach. You have folks who are Muslim, Jewish, Arab, who are all being affected by this incident. I would like to also point out, as a clinical social worker, the traumas that are not only being experienced overseas, but also the traumas of watching a genocide happen on all forms of media. And again, I say that going on to all sides and anyone who sees any side of the issue. Furthermore, Palm Beach County is one of the largest investors in Israeli bonds within the United States. It's important to realize that, yes, while that can bring return, also, it is proven that these are not foolproof. Those can fall through, and we can see a lack of return on the finances that are being put into these bonds. We've been talking about a lot of great efforts for the city tonight, and I think those are ones that we could spend much more time and money investing in, as opposed to some of these investment efforts. I do think it's important to call for a ceasefire as it is a humanitarian effort. And we can acknowledge all lives lost on all sides while still aiming to bring a ceasefire and bring peace to all of those involved. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Andrea, followed by Arianna Holblin.
Andrea Trainer, 1611 Crest Drive, Lakewood, Florida. Andrea Traynor, sixteen eleven Crest Drive, Lake Worth, Florida. I want to thank you all for listening to everybody tonight. I think that's at the heart of what this is all about, is just having our voices heard, which I think we can all agree on. I'd like to thank the organizer responsible for this community participation. We squabble all the time over turf and hotels and Bennys and BS, quite frankly, that taking a minute to pause and reflect on our shared humanity, I think is really, if nothing else comes from tonight, I'm really glad that people are coming together and recognizing that within this resolution, there is space for that shared humanity. There's space to call for a ceasefire and a return of the hostages and to let humanitarian aid, and it doesn't have to be a singular point that people are listening to here and ignoring the rest. I did want to speak after, I'm sorry, the young people in the room, because I do think that this is the future, you know? And whether it be on college campuses or commission rooms, I'm sure you all in your young days did the same thing, right? They're doing what we would hope.
Absolutely.
That people around the country are doing. When you see such horrific things taking place, you're compelled to speak up and stand against it. I know that some folks up here have said that they didn't want to speak on international, have an international focus, but like what the speaker before me said, I think that it is important to think globally and recognize how local actions impact our global communities, particularly here in Lake Worth Beach, where we are such a diverse community, we champion our diverse community, we acknowledge that there are people within our community that have come from countries that have faced similar horrific things and have found home and safety here in Lake Worth Beach. So passing a resolution is a show of solidarity. It is a way to uplift our community members, it's a way to bring awareness to the collective lives lost, to the divestment that we can do here locally. There's plenty of room within the resolution to acknowledge all of these things. Lake Worth Beach is infamous for being the first in the state of Florida to pass LGBTQ Sanctuary City. That was a monumental, historic first for Lake Worth to be able to claim, and as such, other cities followed suit. Tallahassee?
Okay.
Okay, so thank you.
Good one.
So there is room there, even though nobody in Florida has done it yet, to once again be the first to do it. A hundred municipalities across twenty-six states in this country have done it. So this is not to say that it's outside the scope of local municipalities. And I'm just going to finish with some quotes from when Lake Worth was so historic in doing that. Betty Rush, you said someone has to stand up, someone has to be the first person to say, you know what, this is not right, or the first city to say, this is not right.
Thank you, Deb.
And I'm proud of our diverse city, proud to be able to take a stand.
Thank you very much. Up next is Arianna Hoblin, or Hoblin, I don't know how to pronounce it, followed by Ellie Robb.
Hi, my name is Arianna Hoblin. It's one two four nine zero Shoreline Drive, Wellington, Florida. And I found out that this was happening today, and October seventh was the deadliest day for the Jewish people since the Holocaust. While, yes, the Jewish people were attacked, it was an indiscriminate attack. Hamas, a internationally recognized terrorist organization, broke into Israel's border. They didn't only rape, murder, behead, burn bodies of Jewish women, children, men, elderly, they also did it to the Muslims living in Israel. There was no discrimination in that. They went into Israel and killed and tortured anyone that they possibly could. Calling for a ceasefire right now is completely the inappropriate thing. I want peace. I want this war to end. I want to know that my friends who are currently serving in the Israeli Defense Forces are safe. I don't want to keep waiting to hear if they're going to die or not. I don't want that announcement. But the fact that we have hostages, a nine-month-old baby was taken hostage, we still do not have him back. The fact that there are hostages, there is no time now for a ceasefire. And one thing I do want to add, there is a Instagram page that organized a community to be here today, and there was something in their comment on their post, until Israel has fallen, until the US empire lays in ruins, until we shut down Elbit and free Palestine. They want to, I mean, that's a horrible thing to say, to ruin America? I mean, it's a, it's a terrible thing, and I want to stand here as a proud Jewish Zionist woman, and please do not vote for a ceasefire because a ceasefire will only kill more innocent civilians. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Ellie Robb. Ellie? Okay. Followed by Ramsey McLeod.
Hi, my name is Ellie Rab, twenty-one hundred Linton Lake Drive, Delray Beach, Florida. I'm a student at Florida Atlantic University and a resident of Palm Beach County. I'm here today to urge you to vote against the proposed ceasefire resolution. On October sixth, a ceasefire was in place. However, on October seventh, Hamas, a designated terror, foreign terrorist organization by the United States Department, launched an attack that brutally slaughtered men, women, and children, council members. Tonight, you will hear many people calling for a ceasefire by Israel and its war against Hamas. They will argue that it is the moral choice to prevent further loss of life. Let me be very clear, the loss of innocent life horrifies me, whether Jewish, Arab, Israeli, or Palestinian. War is terrible, but like most Americans, I want the war to end. But also like most Americans, I believe a ceasefire should only occur once the hostages that were taken captive by Hamas are released and Hamas is removed from its power. Calling for an immediate ceasefire guarantees that Hamas remains in power and continues to plan future attacks on Israel. It would in effect excuse the indiscriminate rape, murder, and torture of innocent Israelis. The atrocities committed on October seventh are too graphic to describe in detail, but Israel has the right and duty to ensure that Hamas can never commit such horrors again. We should be calling for Hamas to release the hostages and put down its arms, allowing a responsible Palestinian leadership to take control. This is the fastest way to end the conflict and immense suffering in Gaza. Ending Hamas rule would be a tremendous blessing for the Palestinians of Gaza, who have lived in seventeen years under a dictatorship that systematically denies rights to women, LGBTQ individuals, and religious minorities. I know you want to stand up for peace, and so do I. The only chance for peace begins with the end of Hamas rule. An immediate ceasefire would guarantee future war, bloodshed, and suffering for both Israelis and Palestinians. Thank you.
Thank you. Ramsey McLeod, followed, followed by Danita Detne? Sorry.
This is boring local stuff, sorry.
Please.
Ramsey McLeod, twenty-fourth South C Street. Thank you for finally holding a special meeting regarding artificial turf. It's unfortunate that it took so long, but I'm glad it finally did. I was at this meeting and noticed there were several realtors in the audience, but none came forward with information regarding the sale of properties containing artificial turf. Therefore, I have several points I would appreciate being addressed when city staff returns with some recommendations on its use. One, how does Papa compute the value of land when artificial turf is used? Do they take it into consideration at all? Do they consider it as valuable as if the area was concrete? Do they take any alterations into consideration, or do they just place a value on the land itself regardless of the shape it is in? I feel staff will get better answers from Papa than if I were to reach out to them for these clarifications. Two, if someone buys a property, loves the house, but it has a patch of artificial turf in the backyard, who is responsible to return the patch back to usable land? Is this something that is negotiated like a roof replacement? Three, what is the, what impact does the length of time have on the land below the artificial turf? Is there a length of time that will prevent the land from ever being used to grow anything? Also, what will it take to restore the land to a quote, "healthy and usable" state, and how long will it take? Probably best for Commissioner McVoy to provide his input on this, as this should be his area of expertise. Four, how will new, a new homeowner know when the artificial turf needs to be replaced? Should they choose to keep it? Is that on the seller, or will code enforcement or the building division be responsible for keeping track of that information and providing the appropriate notifications? My concerns are of a personal nature, because I have lived in my house for fourteen years, and I still have a patch in my backyard that I have yet to be able to get anything to grow. I have added muck-mixed dirt, placed sod more than once, fertilized, watered, et cetera, and yet it still looks like straw in that one area. This is all because there was a bathtub placed there probably five to ten years before I moved in, and I'm left with the fallout of its non-removal. For the webmaster, I have three points I'd like addressed. One, can we make the make a report button back, put it back on the main page? Right now, it's a layered process. You have to go to the department, find it there, and then submit a report. It's not very user-friendly anymore. In addition, on the city commission page, the photo still reflects Kim Stokes as a commissioner. Can we please get that updated? As of yesterday, it did. Also, when you click on the "How Do I" link to select a city department under the contact heading, it takes you to the code complaint form. Can this please be fixed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, Danita, followed by Pamela Cohen, followed by Jay Marcus. Hi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. I'm Danita Dehaney, and I live at two two six one one Espinata Circle West in Boca Raton.
Thank you.
And I'm here tonight to speak and hopefully to encourage you to vote against the proposed resolution for a ceasefire. I have many reasons, and I will share three with you tonight. First and foremost, there was a ceasefire on October sixth, a ceasefire that was in place. On October seventh, Hamas, the international terrorist group, decided to break that ceasefire by entering Israel's borders and ravaging the people and the country. Jewish people, Arabs, everyone who they could kill and brutally murder and rape, they enacted that. I was in Israel in February to meet with hostages and to improve my understanding of what was happening with the conflict. What I learned is not only is Hamas continuing to attack and brutalize Israel, Hezbollah in the north is doing the same. Fifty attacks a week coming in from the northern border while you still have Hamas doing, creating their acts. In Israel, the saying is, "Bring them home." There are still hostages there, and this conflict cannot end, there cannot be a ceasefire until the hostages are released. And I believe that it is irresponsible and a direct violation of our relationship with Israel and the Jewish people to vote for ceasefire when there are children, babies, women, and men still being held in the tunnels of Hamas. So with respect, I ask you to vote against this resolution and to support our country's stance and relationship with Israel, and to recognize that Israel has the right to defend itself. And the minute Hamas returns those hostages, there will be a ceasefire. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to, for, and for everybody, we're very glad to get everyone's god knows opinion about this. There is no proposal before us to vote, you need to understand that as well. We're not here to vote, it's, we're, we're taking your comments and welcoming them, but there's nothing that has been, there's no piece of paper that says, "Here, vote on this." So that, just for clarification. So Pamela Cohen, followed by Jay.
Pamela Cohen, seven five four seven London Lane, Boca Raton. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and I wanted to say that, of course, I am against you even considering to see a resolution for a ceasefire. A ceasefire, first of all, as has been expressed, there was a ceasefire on October sixth, and before that, since two thousand and seven, when Hamas took control in basically a coup, took control of Gaza, and they then, there was a ceasefire, there was an attack, they attacked Israel in two thousand and eight. They then attacked, and there was then a ceasefire, which then did not address the fact that Hamas is a terror organization intent on the destruction of the state of Israel. And not only the destruction of the state of Israel, but the complete annihilation of the Jewish people around the world. That is in their charter. They do not make any, you know, bones about it. They believe that, and they express it clearly. There was then an attack in two thousand and twelve, where they lobbed missiles at Israel in two thousand and twelve, and then a ceasefire. Again, in two thousand and fourteen, they lobbed missiles at Israel with the intent of attacking civilians. The fact that Israel has an iron dome to protect itself because it cares about its civilians, because it wants to protect and loves life, does not mean that Hamas is not, has the, it's okay and absolved from being able to continually attack and, and target civilians. There was then a ceasefire. And again, what did Hamas do at that time? They took it to create tunnels, to create, to procure armaments from Iran and elsewhere, and to strengthen themselves for further attacks, which they did then in two thousand and twenty-one. So again, ceasefire does not mean that there's an end to the conflict. Ceasefire plays into the hands of Hamas so that they can strengthen themselves to fight another day. And it is good to have a defense, for Israel have the right to defend itself, but a defense is not just blocking your hits. A defense is also preventing you by destroying your capability to hit me. Please understand that advocacy, okay, for protection of one group, that some of these people are trying to say that they're doing, while in the same breath calling for the destruction and the elimination of another is not actually advocacy, it is pure hate, and it does not belong here. So thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jay, followed by Melissa Salerno.
Good evening. Jay Canella Marcus, twelve twenty-four Sixteenth Avenue North, Lake Worth Beach. I wanted to voice my thoughts regarding the Lake Worth Beach ceasefire resolution for Gaza. I listened to the pre-agenda work meeting and was disappointed that members of the dais are not willing to move forward with a ceasefire resolution. I invite you to allow residents to host a community presentation so you can learn why this issue affects the city as a whole. Earlier this month, the dais had passed a resolution for Holocaust Remembrance Day. I ask this as a Jewish person. What good does this remembrance do if we're not stopping it from happening again? Commemorating the Holocaust and the traditions of my people goes beyond remembering the victims. Commemorating the victims of any genocide, especially the Holocaust which annihilated the Jewish people, includes committing to never allowing the tragic history to repeat itself. It means taking a stance for humanity. It means commemorating the lives lost with genocides happening in real time in Gaza. The mayor voiced a ceasefire resolution won't be considered because it's an international issue. The atrocities happening in Gaza is not simply an international issue, just as the Holocaust was not an international issue. It is an issue which affects people socially, spiritually, and on a human level. As a Jewish person, I urge you to listen to the community about the ongoing thing that's happening and to create a resolution which supports a permanent ceasefire. I'll keep coming back until I see Lake Worth Beach pass a ceasefire resolution. As you remember the Holocaust, there are Jews who urge you to remember its most striking lesson. Never again means never again for anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Salerno, followed by Anthony Segrit.
Hi, Melissa Salerno, five zero one South End Street, Lake Worth, three three four six zero. In a little more than a month, the entire country will unite in patriotism, exploding in bursts of red, white, and blue stars and stripes. We will revel and celebrate with barbecues and fireworks, with songs rich with lyrics about. about freedom and courage. We will commemorate a hard-fought battle and victory against a tyrannical and oppressive government and the heroes that made it so. Our founding forefathers are a well-respected group of American revolutionaries whose names and stories are woven into the very fabric of the country's history. Just pass through any community in any U.S. city or town, and you will see their names on countless streets, bridges, and schools. I can't help but wonder, if they were here now, where would their loyalties lie? If George Washington were standing before us in this very moment, would anyone here dare to call him a terrorist? Would anyone have the audacity to question whether or not he condoned the Boston Tea Party? The heroes who founded the country we call home were indeed revolutionaries who fought to shed, to shed the oppressive overreach of British rule, who desired freedom of religion and freedom, the rights to self-govern. And yet here we stand today, the United States of America steadfastly backing with our words, our actions, our money, and our weapons, a longstanding system of government oppression that rivals not the conditions that our revolutionary forefathers fought against, but that of an apartheid. I wonder what the founding fathers would think of that, seeing how far we've slipped from the values that embody the spirit of the United States, the ideals of liberty, equality, natural and civil rights, and responsible citizenship. Apartheid, an Afrikaans word whose literal translation is apartness. Since the Nakba of 1948, the Zionist fervor of the Israeli government has systematically, methodologically, and quietly succeeded in displacing, dispossessing, discriminating, and erasing Palestinian people and culture, resulting in complete dehumanization. The Zionist zealots have murdered, stolen, humiliated, and imprisoned Palestinians for decades with impunity, all under the farce of practicing Judaism, when their actions couldn't be further from key moral principles of Judaism: justice, healing the world, charity, kindness to others, and the sanctity of human life. Do these principles align with the monstrosities we see daily that are the Palestinian existence? On October 6th, 2023, I was one whose sentiments were similar to the masses.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anthony Segrit, followed by Brian Seymour. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor Betty, Commissioners, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Anthony Segrit, and I live at 601 South Palm Way, Lake Worth Beach. I'm here tonight to ask that you stand for and demand accountability. There are three things that I believe about our municipal code and its enforcement. One, the law in our municipal code should be followed by residents, property owners, businesses, city staff, and this commission. Two, the law in our municipal code should be clear and unambiguous, and when it is not, it should be interpreted in favor of the resident, citizen, property owner, or business owner. And three, if anyone abuses their position of power within the city, whether that be through ignorance or malice, they should be held accountable. Last special meeting, we all witnessed something extraordinary. The city admitted it had knowingly prosecuted homeowners for something that they knew was actually acceptable underneath our municipal code. To use a specific example, one property owner in this city was cited, prosecuted, and a lien of over $14,000, which is still ticking, was placed on their home for having artificial turf as their pool decking. City staff in the special meeting clarified upon request of the mayor that this was, in fact, an allowable use. The same city staff that were responsible for the citation and subsequent prosecution of this homeowner, they worked with the city attorney to ensure this homeowner got fined and prosecuted by the magistrate, despite the homeowner raising the very issue that this was permitted as a use as part of his pool decking in place of impervious material. To be clear, the same city staff that knew this was allowed worked with the city attorney to prosecute a homeowner for this. I do not know that this abuse was out of ignorance or malice, but it's worth investigating. This is not an isolated incident, and as a city, we need to do better. There needs to be accountability. I am asking this commission and the city manager to investigate this and other such incidents. I am asking this commission and the city manager to hold staff accountable in whatever way they can. I'm asking this commission and the city manager to immediately vacate all of these liens on innocent homeowners' properties. Liens cause real harm financially, emotionally, and more. These people should not need to wait for the very staff that, wrongfully prosecuting them, to come up with another ordinance before these fines are lifted. There is already an existing ordinance in place that exonerates them. These people should not have to wait any longer, and those responsible, there should be accountability. It doesn't matter if it was done out of malice or out of ignorance. That's bad job performance, and they should be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Brian Seymour, followed by Jeffrey Dawson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Commission. My name is Brian Seymour, 777 South Flagler Drive, West Palm Beach. Some of you may recognize me. That's not why I'm here. I am the Israelan Overseas Chair for the Jewish Federation of Palm Beach County. I've been Israel twice since October the 7th. I've met with families of hostages. I've been to two different areas that were shot up where people were murdered. I hear about the sanctity of human life, and I wonder what that means for the one-year-old child who remains a hostage, who had their first birthday. I wonder what that means for the murdered in Israel. I wonder what it means for those, including an 83-year-old grandfather whose granddaughter we met, wonders when she's ever going to see him again, if she's ever going to see him again. I'm completely disheartened by the blood libels against the Jews and Israel that I've heard tonight. Genocide is not what you're seeing. Thirty-five thousand people, no verification. We know that Hamas, we know that Hamas puts civilians in danger. We know that they utilize hospitals and schools as weapon storage and places from which to fight. These are not questions, these are facts. The city of Lake Worth Beach is, in fact, an inclusive community, and I stand here as a Jew, and I know many, many, many like me, not all, obviously you've heard some others tonight, who look at questions of passing resolutions of ceasefire, focusing only on Israel, not on Syria where Muslims are murdered, not when Boko Haram rapes and murders children, and wonders what a city does. No, this is not your issue. This is not artificial turf, which is actually critical to what you do in your communities. But to say that this is about inclusivity, when you target the Jewish state and only the Jewish state, is a problem for me. It is a problem for many. And so what we ask is that you don't consider a resolution on a ceasefire, but if you do, that you make very clear that Hamas is at fault, that Hamas must step to the table, that Hamas must put down their weapons, and that Hamas must release the hostages. Because on October the 6th, there wasn't an Israeli in Gaza. There were only Israelis in Gaza because Israel was invaded. I'm a veteran in the United States military. I was a military police officer, and I've seen war, and it is ugly, and it is painful. And I can tell you, not one Israeli with whom I've met wants a war. They're defending. They want peace, they want freedom, and they want safety. That is all. And if there is going to be a resolution, then it must support the fact that Hamas, the terrorist organization, began a war, continues to fight the war, and indiscriminately target Israelis and utilize Palestinians, civilians, as human shields. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Jeffrey Dawson. Jeffrey Dawson, followed by Kevin Sullivan.
Thank you. Jeff Dawson, I'm at 25,000 Portofino Circle, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, 33418. And the reason I'm here as a resident of Palm Beach Gardens is because I believe the ceasefire being discussed tonight is both misguided and dangerous. Like all of you, I abhor the loss of innocent lives. War is tragic and horrifying, but calling for an immediate ceasefire in the current conflict between Israel and Hamas without addressing the underlying issues will only perpetuate more violence and more suffering. An immediate ceasefire would allow Hamas to remain in power and give them the opportunity to rebuild their capabilities and plan future attacks on Israel. They've gone on television a number of times. They've repeatedly promised that they will continue more October 7th attacks. It would also mean more, more bloodshed and more suffering for both Israelis and Palestinians. Hamas has shown time and time again their goal is not peace, but the destruction of Israel. We cannot ignore the atrocities they have committed, including, of course, the horrific attacks on October 7th. Furthermore, ending Hamas's rule is not just in the interest of Israel's security, but also for the people of Gaza, who have lived under a repressive regime for 17 years. Women, LGBTQ+, individuals, and religious minorities suffer greatly under Hamas's dictatorship. On May 13th, The New York Times published a report about how Hamas operates a secret police force that conducts extensive surveillance on everyday Palestinians, monitoring their political activity, online posts, and personal relationships. They run an extremely oppressive system that targets anyone who criticizes the government, including journalists, and anyone who's suspected of immoral behavior, subjecting them to harassment, intimidation, and defamation. And the reality is that before this war even started, Palestinians were living in constant fear, unable to express dissent or live freely. A ceasefire with Hamas still in power only prolongs their oppression of the Palestinian people. In the past, this council has wisely refrained from involving itself in international affairs, recognizing the complexity of these issues and the council's primary focus on local matters. I commend you for this approach, and I urge you to continue in this direction. Conclusion, I urge you to be against, if this resolution is brought, we must support efforts that lead to genuine peace and security, not those that enable further violence and suffering. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Up next, Kevin Sullivan, followed by Mandy Curry. Ms. Curry, do you want me to read this, or do you want to read it? Do you want to come up?
Good morning.
You're going to come up? Good. Much prefer that. Good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Sullivan, 3131 Southeast Lexington Lake Drive, Stewart. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. There's a couple of things I want to point up, point out that depart from my prepared comments. The first is the references to Hamas occupying the people of Gaza and oppressing them. Israel has been oppressing Palestine since 1948, since the Nakba. Israel is an occupying state. They, from the UN Charter that was passed in 1948, they immediately departed from it. It's historically proven. There's no dispute about it. And the atrocities that occur on a daily basis on the West Bank are also well documented. Gaza is considered the largest open-air prison on the planet. Over 14,000 people per square mile live there. Israel controls the water flow, the fuel, the electricity, the medical care, everything. All those people are at the mercy of Israel. You talk about what's going, sorry, shouldn't look back there, what's going on with oppression. There's a concept in Israel known as administrative detention. That means that any time they can take a Palestinian, put them in jail, not let the family know where they are, keep them there indefinitely without charging them. And there's thousands of Palestinians. It's estimated that over 40% of the Palestinian males alive in that country have spent time in administrative detention. And just the hypocrisy of saying that 130 hostages equate to 35,000 dead Palestinians, the majority of whom are women and children who had nothing to do with this war, that were attacked with 2,000-pound bombs provided by the United States, which the United States did not even use in Afghanistan or Syria. They were dumb bombs, and the intention was to annihilate those people. They carpet bombed Gaza, and they continue to do it today. And anything that you hear from the people who oppose the concept of a ceasefire is just fallacy. Now, let's see how far I can get on my prepared remarks.
You're getting close.
So while the U.S. and Israel find themselves increasingly isolated and are reluctant to embrace a permanent ceasefire, over 100 U.S. cities have passed resolutions on the Israel-Gaza war, with a majority calling for a ceasefire. Yet countless other city councils are hesitant to entertain resolutions calling for a permanent ceasefire, arguing that foreign policy is outside the purview of city councils, and that municipal policymaking cannot affect global issues. Sadly, this argument has become one more tactic to move the goalposts instead of pushing back on outside pressure. The chain of representation is essential here. City council memos share constituents with their congressional delegations. Their obligation, at the very least, is to resist Islamophobia, anti-Arab sentiment, anti-Semitism within the districts. Moreover...
Thank you. That's time.
You did well. Thank you very much. You're good with time. Mandy Curry, followed by Faith Halsted. And I'm so distracted by your dog, I can't even stand it.
That's the only way it happens. It doesn't matter where I go.
And I'm like addicted to dogs, so it's really...
I go to the gym everywhere. They're like, oh, there's the dog. And then that person is attached to her. It's fine. It happens all the time.
Ms. Curry.
All right. So I'm Mandy Curry, 4963 Gardner Lane, Lake Worth, Florida, 33463. I'm not going to spend a lot of time rehashing everything everyone else has said or giving you guys a history lesson. You guys are already well aware of everything that's going on. I would point out, there's a lot of people speaking about how they visited Israel, which I think is amazing, but I noticed there's nobody here who wants to visit Palestine, mostly because it's been militarized since the 60s, so it's not really a vacation spot. Second of all, I think it's interesting when we talk about Hamas bombing, I'm not saying I'm supporting a terrorist organization, but it's only indiscriminate when they do it, but it's never indiscriminate when Israeli troops do it. They've got women, children, then we're watching pictures of children under rubble, but it's only indiscriminate if Palestine does it. I just think we need to be fair on both sides. At some point, and it's probably just me, as a therapist, I tend to vote for the underdog, and there comes a point where this is no longer about retaliation. You are leveling an entire group of people. And so many of us love to sit back and go, oh, if I was around during the Holocaust, I would have done something. And then nobody wants to do anything. And then they want to argue and go, mm, but it's complicated. It's not that complicated. Okay? We are leveling an entire culture of people. It's not okay. And as far as a local issue goes, I totally understand what you guys have to do versus other branches of our government and so forth, but I would say to the idea that this isn't a local issue, I will tell you, I'm treating more and more and more of your constituents that are going through trauma because of what's going on over there. It does affect the people here, and we keep investing in Israeli bonds. So if our money's going to go there, and I got to treat people because of it, I would say it's a local issue. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. And thank you for bringing such a beautiful dog. Faith Halsted, followed by Eric Esch, almost, almost my name without the R. Faith Halsted, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Faith Halsted. I'm a resident of 1221 North Federal Highway, Lake Worth Beach, 33460. I'm currently residing in two different locations.
Oh, okay.
As I said, my name is Faith Halsted. I'm a mental health care worker and longtime resident of Lake Worth, which means I've been serving our community for many years now. I stand before you today compelled to address the ongoing genocide in Palestine. While to some, this may seem like a distant international issue, I urge you to recognize its resonance within our community. The atrocities being committed demand our attention and action, not just as global citizens, but as representatives of this city. The images of destruction and suffering emanating from Palestine are not merely headlines. They represent the human cost of systemic oppression and violence. We cannot afford to turn a blind eye to the injustices being perpetrated against innocent civilians. It is our moral imperative to speak out against such atrocities and advocate for justice and peace. I implore this commission to take a stance against the ongoing violence and to actively support efforts for a ceasefire resolution. We must recognize our responsibility to represent the diverse voices of our citizens, including those who are deeply impacted by the genocide in Palestine. It is not enough to simply offer thoughts and prayers. We must take concrete actions to stand in solidarity with oppressed communities and work towards a just and lasting peace for all. In the face of such immense suffering, we cannot afford to remain passive bystanders. The time for action is now. It has been now. Please, we are asking you to honestly and accurately represent your community, your constituents, and send a clear message that we stand against genocide... constituents, and send a clear message that we stand against genocide, injustice and oppression in all of its forms. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next is Erica Esch, followed by Alexandra Kopetsky.
Good evening. Erica Esch, 1221 North Federal Highway of so-called Lake Worth, Florida, on the occupied lands of Yega and Hove peoples. Here tonight to speak on the role in necessitated international solidarity with the entirety of oppressed peoples in occupied Palestine and diasporic Palestinians abroad, including here. Tonight, we are here as a collective to bring about awareness towards the ongoing goal of a ceasefire resolution, among other ways of disrupting this violence. And sitting here tonight, the air conditioning buzzes and is not drowned out by the overhead of drones, nor the lights of our homes go out on a timer produced by apartheid. The budgets and power we have to alter the Floridian and international scale of violence is alterable in this room by a number of tactics and efforts made to contain the spectacle of wealth, send to ethnically cleanse Palestinians, and genocide them on the basis of our constituency power and complicity. So let us be aware now of the podium microphones muffled against the mouth of the political, the so-called surveillance that we experience among us and we do not receive any sight for. We are here tonight as community, and regardless of our will for peace as individuals and the sense of danger posed legitimately by propagandist ideology that has meant Zionist Israeli apartheid to be criticized as antisemitic, we must resist that and name genocide what it is so that we have a mutual understanding of what settler colonialism is on lands, including this one Turtle Island. We are not alone in imagining the cost of genocide on our hands while investing a staggering $700 million in Israeli bonds, and we're worried about the next couple people whom we fed, or where their beds will become. Dealing with neighborhood hunger and houselessness is overlooked to fund genocide and concurrently creates a localized fund for war culturally and economically, regardless of the intentions of a given city. Intentions which we see reduce us to a lack of access to food, home, water and clean air before even considering the unthinkable, funding open-air prison and genociding on the basis of ideological racism. We protect ideological and local cultural notions of safety and rehousing while compromising everyone here and abroad in the process. And it is time to bring education and support for the resistance against occupation and apartheid. It is not for the fact that I'm a constituent, it is for the fact that I would like to ask the commissioners to grow acquainted on a personal level with the actuality of life in Palestine since the Nakba. I would also invest, not because of the ceasefire resolution or because a bunch of people believe in it, but because we demand, as human beings, the legitimacy of our actions be known in this room. We are not independent when we feel this way, we are--
Please address the command, please ma'am. Please address the commission.
--ancestors of resistance to settler colonialism. In a white body, I stand with comrades, BIPOC origin, Palestinian here and abroad, to demand, again, not just a ceasefire, but the disruption to violence. This starts with education. You're welcome.
Thank you. Up next is Alexandria, Alexandra Kopetsky, Kopetsky?
Kopetsky.
Kopetsky.
First time, I'm so proud.
Thank you, I try.
Well, you're doing great, and I just want to say thank you so much for hearing us today, and I know that you've heard a lot of us. So I, first off, my address is 22300 Calabria Court, Boca Raton, Florida, but I am speaking for one of my dear friends who is a Lake Worth resident, who couldn't be here today because she was in a car accident, but who is Palestinian. And I would like to share a little bit, first, I want to address two things. So first off, I want to uplift what Kevin has said about administrative detention, because while I 100% say that the hostages from October 7th need to return home, there are children in administrative detention under 13 years old being held without lawyer or being able to see their family for six to eight months. I have not personally been to Palestine, but I learned about Palestine from my teacher, who was an activist there and who is helping to defend the houses from settlers in the West Bank, and actually had her leg broken at that time. Her mother was a UN documentarist for the refugees all across the globe. So that's how I first learned about it. I am here to speak for my friend, who many of us in our community are crowdfunding for right now, because her husband is on the West Bank, hasn't been able to work since October 7th. She just had to go through a Telegram channel of dead children to see if her cousin was still alive, and his month-old baby, four-year-old little girl, and the baby that they had during the genocide when it started. I've been providing meal trains to her. We've been trying to crowdfund so that she's not having to spend $1,000 a month to support four different families, one that has evacuated to Egypt, two that are in Rafa right now, moving location to location every day, trying to not get bombed and trying to avoid death, and also her husband trying to get him over here, because she was able to evacuate to safety. It's absolutely an atrocity that we are not looking at what is happening in the context, because as the UN commissioner said, October 7th did not happen in a vacuum. And if you look at the International Committee, or, I'm sorry, International Community, the majority of them support Palestine, there are UN resolutions that are countless against Palestine. The United States is actually the only country that is, out of 82, I think, vetoes that they've done, 50 of them were to stop Israel from being sanctioned from the international community. Many people before me have mentioned the Israeli bonds. Why are we, first off, so if I'm correct in my research, Lake Worth gets the majority of its money from either the county or federally. Federally, we just sent $14 billion to bomb Gaza, to bomb Palestine. They have no access to food, no access to water. Israel's completely shut it down. The International Community, I'm sorry, the ICJ, I think in 2014, had a whole entire thing telling the international community that it was an apartheid, that it was illegal, that wall. They are now not able to access any of that. They are starving. They're literally starving. And, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought here for a second, because I'm just so--
Take your time.
--freaking frustrated. And pardon my French, I apologize. But the thing is, is that money could be here. The $200 million that we had invested from October 7th could be used for half the stuff, that you need here in Lake Worth right now, in my city, in Boca Raton, and I'm actually appalled, like absolutely appalled. And so, I'm not even asking you to look at a ceasefire resolution right now, I'm asking for you to just look at an educational presentation, because half of what I heard here tonight is, like, I'm just--
Thank you, that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes. Peggy Fisher, followed by Debbie Robert, followed by, oh my goodness, Yao Victor Santos Goncalves, and I apologize if I don't know how to pronounce--
Good, you're good.
Yeah? Okay, great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Peggy Fisher, North A Street, Lake Worth Beach. We need to address a couple of things that are going on in this meeting. It is 19, and as far as I see from the agenda, you really haven't done much city business. The room is crowded to the point of having people sitting on the floor, tripping people who are sitting in seats, which should be addressed and should not happen, and has been addressed before, but not tonight. I don't want anyone to die. I want peace. I think that's what most people do. But this all came about because one of the commissioners brought this up at a pre-agenda meeting, after numerous residents have said, we need to focus on city business, local business, what needs to be done. There are a lot of problems in this city that need to be addressed. You're in the middle of budget season, you have got a lot of things on your plate, and now we are two hours and 20 minutes into this meeting, and unfortunately, the electeds of this city aren't really doing business for the residents of this city right now because we're having public comment. There are a number of people who are not in Lake Worth Beach, and the bonds that Palm Beach County participates in, then go to Palm Beach County and make comments at their commission meeting. We need to get back to the business of the city. As a property owner, voter, resident of the city, I don't have any hard will to anyone in this city, this world, but we need to focus on what our responsibility is and what you were elected to do. And that's all I'm asking you to do, and make it safe for the people in this room so that we don't fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Roberts up next, followed by the person whose name I apparently did pretty well with, but I don't want to push my luck. Good evening.
Good evening. Deborah Robert, South K Street, Lake Worth Beach. This is what happens when we start dealing with international situations in a small city that has no vote, no say whatsoever in international politics. It's interesting, because the Rwandan genocide killed over 800,000 people and is still killing people this day. I haven't heard a word from any of you at all about that situation, nor Somalia, nor 100,000 people that are being abused in China right now, not a word. I listened to the May 10th, 24th pre-agenda meeting, I have strong concerns about discussion of resolutions on any international affairs, but specifically right now Gaza to ceasefire, because I don't believe it is commission's place to take any kind of official international stand from the dais in the name of our city and all citizens. I also hope you might appreciate the weight of how serious a concern this is, and I do mean for everyone.
Please address--
I mean pro con, I mean for everyone. But since October 7th, antisemitic incidents have jumped more than 300%, and I've experienced this myself, right here on Lake Worth Beach, right, Lake Worth Avenue, I've experienced it, and that is not okay in my own city. Mention of this kind of resolution, which we're dealing with now, or taking a stand in chambers, could promote more antisemitic vitriol, and other vitriol, I agree. It'll divide this community and exacerbate the rhetoric that has already led to meteoric rises of hate, and we can't afford that. And aside from this, this is an issue that is among, just think about this, it is one of the most nuanced and complicated international affairs in our lifetime, in our lifetime. Even the pursuit for this city, finding consensus language for a unified voice could alter the delicate balance of diversity acceptance that we trust in the city. You're never going to find it, I think you heard it today, you are never going to find that balance. Why bring this in? Let's not bring this layer into our city. Let's instead rise above divisive discourse for resolution that this would bring. Let's reaffirm the values that we may all in this room hold near and dear, let's pull it together. Local governments have no power nor say in matters of foreign affairs or policy. Please, let's stay focused on each other and not take precious time away from the matters before us. Those are the city-Lake Worth Beach boundaries, and the matters that you were all elected to handle. Let's do that, and I have great respect and thanks for your service.
Now I want to hear you say it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioner, Joan Vito Santos Goncalves. I live at 5016 Ashley River Road, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33417. Somebody left their phone up here.
He'll bring it back.
I appreciate our previous commentary mentioning the genocides in Rwanda, because actually, as it so happens, Israel had a hand in perpetuating this genocide against Rwandans, but I'm going to just actually go aside from that. I'm just going to start listing facts about Gaza right now. Thirty-five, minimum 35,000 people have been killed indiscriminately by weapons produced, bought, sold, manufactured here in the United States with our tax money on our dime, and Palm Beach County actually is the largest, you know, supplier of Israeli bonds in the world. I don't know if you guys know that. And that's $700 million, I think it would go way better to developing some of these artificial turf things we got going on. But every hospital in Gaza, which is as long as a marathon and half as wide, has been destroyed. There has been extensive documentation of the Israeli occupation forces and their genocidal campaign in 4K footage on every social media platform since and before October 7th. Because I like that we think history began on October 7th, and I've heard things about ceasefires on October 6th. The Palestinians in the occupied Palestinian territories had a ceasefire with Israel on October 6th, the same way that the black South Africans in the Bantustans in South Africa had a ceasefire with apartheid states South Africa in the 90s and before. Every university in Gaza has been destroyed. Commissioner May, I remember you were speaking earlier about how beautiful it was to see the smile in those young men's eyes as they go off to their next adventures. I regret to inform you that those adventures for Palestinian children won't be happening, those Palestinian young men, because every single one of their universities has been leveled to the ground by American bombs. And I wish that that wasn't the case, but the fact of the matter is that we have a lot of people here, including myself, I won't even lie, I don't live in, I don't live in Lake Worth Beach, but I went to Forest Hill High School. I grew up on these streets, and lots of folks that I've never seen before, suddenly really interested in city business, when it has to do with the city coming together against the most despicable crime in our lifetimes, for those of us that weren't alive for the Holocaust, all right? I stand here in solidarity with my Jewish comrades. The only thing that contributes to the rise of antisemitism is a destruction of Palestine in the name, in the supposed name of the Jewish people and in the name of Judaism. And if there's one thing I've learned from my Jewish comrades, it is tikkun olam, repair the world, and you don't repair shit by blowing it up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What a dramatic ending. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, do you have any comments, non-agend item comments?
I have five.
Thank you. And then we're going to take a break.
I didn't want to online fire you, you can scrub that.
Are you can, are you can scrub, Mr.--
Yeah, Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Very Goncalves.
Santos Goncalves.
Santos Goncalves. But you had to make it complicated and put all your names.
Legal terms.
Thank you. Yeah, you can scratch his and read the others.
I'm sorry, scratch whose?
Mr. Goncalves. She can't see you.
Um, I do not have a comment to read from him, and I--
There you go.
I always, it might have come in after five, but I listen to hear who gives the public comment, and if they submitted online, I won't read.
Just admitted it was after five. Guilty as charged.
There you go. All right, so the first comment, Wes Blackman, 241 Columbia Drive. A city's focus should be on its priorities rather than concerning itself with the actions of foreign countries. There are several compelling reasons for this. Limited resources. Cities have limited resources, both in terms of budget and personnel. Focusing on external matters diverts resources away from addressing the city's own pressing needs, such as infrastructure development, public services and social programs. Lack of control. Cities have little to no control over the actions of foreign countries. Getting involved in international affairs can lead to complex and unpredictable situations, making it difficult to achieve desired outcomes. Distraction from local issues. When a city's attention is directed outward, it can lead to neglect of local issues that directly impact the lives of its residents. This can result in deteriorating infrastructure, inadequate public services and declining quality of life. Potential for conflict. Engaging in international affairs can increase the likelihood of conflict with other countries or regions. This can have negative consequences, such as strained diplomatic relations, economic sanctions, or even military conflict. Limited impact. A city's actions on the international stage are often limited in scope and impact. While a city may have good intentions, its ability to bring about significant change in foreign countries is often constrained by factors beyond its control. Focus on local governance. A city's primary responsibility is to its residents. By concentrating on local governance, a city can ensure that its policies and programs are tailored to the needs and aspirations of its people. Avoiding overreach. Cities should avoid overstepping their boundaries and engaging in matters that are beyond their jurisdiction or expertise. International affairs are often complex and require a comprehensive understanding of global dynamics, which may be beyond the scope of a city's capabilities. Promoting local economic development, concentrating on local priorities allows a city to attract investment, create jobs and stimulate economic growth. This in turn benefits the city's residents and enhances its overall prosperity. Building strong communities. A city's focus should be on creating a livable, sustainable and inclusive community for its residents. By addressing local issues and providing quality public services, a city can foster a sense of belonging and well-being among its citizens. Collaboration and diplomacy-- Collaboration and diplomacy, while cities may not have direct control over foreign affairs, they can still engage in constructive dialogue and collaboration with other cities, regions and international organizations. This can help to promote understanding, cooperation and peaceful resolution of conflicts. In conclusion, a city's priority should be focused on addressing the needs and aspirations of its residents. Next is Lawrence Milstein, 1900 Northwest Corporate Boulevard. Esteemed council members, local government should not play a role in matters of foreign policy or affairs. However, if this esteemed council decides to weigh in on Israel's war against Hamas, calling for an immediate ceasefire will cause no, will cause more harm than good. Israel is at war with Hamas, not the Gazans who have also suffered under Hamas's oppressive rules since 2006. It is Hamas that attempted a genocide on October 7th, breaking these existing ceasefire, invading Israel in the thousands by land, air and sea. Many of the terrorists recorded their own murder, rape, beheading and mutilation of more than 1,200 innocent civilians, including Americans, with 253 others seized as hostages. This barbarism should come as no surprise. Genocide is a central component of Hamas's charter which calls not only for the annihilation of Israel but also for the death of all Jews. October 7th was the deadliest day for the Jewish community since the Holocaust. Israel is defending itself against this savagery that Hamas has declared to repeat over and over again. The only way to ensure it is not repeated is to destroy Hamas. In doing so, Israel has exercised unprecedented efforts to limit civilian casualties. Since the war's inception, Israel has warned civilians in advance of impending military action. The army has sent thousands of text messages and dropped thousands of leaflets into population centers advising Gazans to relocate to safer areas. In contrast, Hamas seeks to maximize casualties on both sides. While Hamas terrorists hide inside tunnels, they jeopardize thousands of Palestinian lives by firing missiles from schools and hospitals. This use of human shields by Hamas exacerbates the suffering among its own population. Hamas deliberately targets civilian, men, women and children by firing indiscriminately into Israeli towns. Israel, on the other hand, continues to expand efforts to provide humanitarian relief to Gaza even as Hamas steals humanitarian aid from Palestinians and repeatedly attacks aid crossing points. To date, the Jewish state has facilitated the entry of more than 27,000 trucks which have carried more than 530,000 tons of water, food, medical supplies, cooking gas, fuel and shelter equipment into Gaza. There have also been more than 9,000 packages dropped by air and most recently with Israel's support, a US-built floating pier is delivering even more humanitarian aid. If the sincere desire is to end the suffering in Gaza, then we will be far better served by placing blame for the suffering where it lies with Hamas and supporting Israel's efforts to liberate the Gazan population from Hamas's brutal rule. A ceasefire without immediate release of the hostages and the surrender of Hamas only perpetuates the suffering in Gaza. Next is Tuesday Gilliam, I'm sorry, Tuesday Gilliam, 518 Northeast Street. Good evening, City Commissioners and Mayor Resch. I rarely listen to your meetings and never do I listen to the pre-agenda meetings, but when I heard from my neighbors what was discussed at the pre-agenda meeting recently regarding the genocide in Palestine, I had to tune in. What I heard was a shock to me, my elected officials, people I have voted for diminishing the importance of what is happening right now in Palestine, saying you do not even care to consider a resolution for a ceasefire. Do you realize how offensive your comments were? Mayor Resch, for you to say that this is an international issue so the city should not get involved was particularly surprising to me. You're engaged in the community and talk about how global Lake Worth is. We are a city of global citizens. We have Muslim residents, we have Palestinian residents, we have people directly and indirectly impacted by the horrible genocide happening right now. Is there a concern for those residents? I personally know people who have been fired from their jobs for voicing support for Palestine. I also know many people scared to speak up because of the climate of fear and retaliation. I have to wonder, is that why you as elected officials will not take a stand? Are you also afraid of retaliation from higher up elected officials? I ask you to take a moment to imagine how your residents who are Muslim, who are Palestinian, who are brave enough to stand up and say this is a human rights catastrophe, imagine how they feel being ignored by all levels of government, including their most direct local representatives. You are the very people we need to voice concern over the atrocities we are all watching play out. I am sure you have seen the videos of children buried under buildings, of babies missing limbs, of families living in tents in the desert, of kids down to skin and bones as they are being intentionally starved. All the major human rights groups are calling this a genocide. Cindy McCain, the wife of deceased Senator John McCain, said in March, "There is a full-blown famine in Gaza that is a horror to look at" and that what is needed is a ceasefire. To say this is not a domestic issue makes a city appear naive. I am sure you know it is our federal funds and the billions of dollars that are funding the weapons that are making this catastrophe. Those dollars could be used here for federal programs to address our housing needs, for drug recovery programs, for more Head Start centers. This is absolutely a domestic issue and I sincerely hope you will reconsider your decision to ignore its impacts on our city. As a longtime Lake Worth Beach resident, I ask you to support, get more educated on this issue and support a ceasefire resolution. Thank you. Next is from Panagioti Tsoukas, 822 North Sea Street. Hello, Mayor and Commissioners, all these months, I kept expecting our local elected officials to do something about the atrocities happening in Palestine. I understood that it took many of us a few months to get a grasp on what was happening there. I personally remember in the very beginning, people talking about the horrible October 7th attacks being used as an excuse to commit genocide. I did not think that would be possible. I would, could not imagine the scope of military aggression against civilians. But here we are, seven months later and what we are seeing every day on our screens is in fact a genocide funded with our tax dollars. In the pre-agenda meeting, the Mayor, Commissioner May and Commissioner Maliga expressed that they felt it was not appropriate to review a resolution for a ceasefire. Tonight, I ask you to reconsider that position. I ask you to make the time to meet with your constituents who are impacted by the horrific events happening in Palestine, to learn about the history of atrocities and to see how local governments taking a ceasefire position can help. I believe you are all compassionate people and I've seen you do meaningful work from legal support for victims to teaching, to engaging with the community and taking your personal time to help people. As elected officials, we need you to take bigger stances as well. It is easy to say this is an international issue and wash your hands of it. The harder, braver thing is to recognize how we are all impacted by the atrocities we are witnessing and to use your position to stand up and call for an end to these atrocities. We rely on our local government to convey the public's concerns to our state and federal representatives. A ceasefire resolution would send an important message that we do not want our federal dollars going to fund this genocide. Why is the funding of Israel a domestic issue but the genocide of Palestine is not? Lake Worth is a city that has historically taken a stand for human rights issues. Again, I ask you to reconsider your position. Thank you. Next is Dami Todd, 1134 19th Avenue. Hello, I am submitting a comment tonight regarding the comments I hear from the pre-agenda meeting related to the discussion about considering a ceasefire resolution. I was shocked that my elected officials made such ignorant and harmful comments. I understand we all make mistakes and I am hopeful that you did not realize how inappropriate your comments were. You said that the city elected officials, the very people that represent the public interest should ignore the fact that our tax dollars are funding a genocide. The mayor called this an international issue and that we did not need to get involved. I am sorry, but you cannot just wash your hands of these situations. You have a responsibility to take a relatively simple action, to recognize the atrocities happening and to simply call for an end to the brutality. We need elected officials to connect with their humanity. Are you not seeing what I am seeing every day? The doctors operating on patients without anesthesia, the families buried alive under rubble, the children missing arms, missing legs, eyes blown out. Each day we say, each day we say quietly to ourselves, "It could not be worse today" and then I check my feeds to see it is worse. When I learned about the Holocaust and the now infamous decision of countries to not intervene, I always wondered how they could do that. How democracies not take a stand when they are seeing these atrocities? And now we are living through a time of unimaginable atrocities and I have to wonder again, how are you remaining silent? I know our federal representatives support this genocide. I've made the calls to Frankel and Mast and they are ignoring the cries of their constituents to stop funding this massacre. We ask you to not be intimidated by the personal retaliation you might receive from higher up elected officials. We need you to take a principled stand to gain more education and bravely support a ceasefire. And the last comment is from Nikki McKay, 3951 Green Forest Drive. Hello, I am not a Lake Worth resident, but I have worked just down the street from City Hall as a social worker serving the community for eight years now. Lake Worth is like a second home to me and I have come to deeply care about the Lake Worth community and community members that I have had the pleasure of working with. I am commenting today to speak about this deep caring place that also extends to all people and values human rights and dignity for all. I believe the council shares these values and I appeal to that place of caring in each of you. We are currently living in a moment in history that may be the most pressing issue of our lives. Never before have we been able to pick up our phones and watch live footage of human suffering like we are able to see happening to the people of Gaza today. We've also been able to see how this ongoing humanitarian crisis has an impact on people across the globe with the vast outcry to stop this genocide coming from so many. A permanent ceasefire is needed to save the lives of those in Gaza and to preserve the faith and hope in humanity for the rest of the world. I believe we are global citizens and Lake Worth is a beautiful representation of that being true and this is why our local community is hurting greatly as this atrocity continues. While our focus must be on protecting Palestinian lives immediately, I also want to bring your attention to how the genocide going on internationally has grave impacts on our local communities. The presence of Lake Worth community members here to speak to this tonight is a first example that shows how strongly this is impacting people locally. The issue is weighing greatly on our local Palestinian Muslim and Jewish brothers and sisters in Lake Worth as these are their families and their people being harmed. They are also experiencing a rise in racism and danger in their daily lives, whether in communities, workplaces or at campuses across the nation. Any residents that are part of oppressed communities such as our LGBTQ plus family who Lake Worth has called itself a safe haven for are feeling the impacts of watching the oppression and genocide of another group because we know that our liberation and freedom is all connected. One aspect of my current role as a social worker is to field calls for mental health support from the local community. I have heard firsthand from multiple Lake Worth residents expressing how the current genocide of Palestinians in Gaza is hurting them. This is traumatic for all those bearing witness and it is life or death for those in Gaza. I ask of you all to connect with the part of you that knows this genocide must end and to acknowledge that this international issue has lasting local impacts for Lake Worth residents that you represent. Please take the time to hear from Palestinians and other impacted residents in a meeting and from their consider a ceasefire resolution. Thank you. That's the final public comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to take a comfort break. Thank you very much. We'll be back in session in a little.
Into the dis, commission to the dis.
They're coming.
To the dis.
Oh, Mr. Brown's coming up too.
Mr. Brown, can you make it warmer in here? He needs to figure it out.
No, you can turn.
You can't do it. It just says bay.
Yeah, you can.
Yes, you can. You can just press the numbers up.
Yeah, yeah. I do it all the time. I do it all the time.
It's not this evening.
Oh. Keeps you awake.
Madam Mayor, it is 9:09, and we are still live, some of us. Sorry, sorry, couldn't help it.
Some of us more lively than others. Okay.
Oh, she here?
She's, is that her? No, that's Krista. No, she's not. I'm gonna, she's landed by now, but I'm sure she's, okay. Are we, we're lucky. Approval of the minute, next up. Oh, the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public hearings, A.
Aye. I don't know whether you can hear it, but this is an aye.
Thank you, we heard.
His face.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, public hearing A, public hearing A, okay. So now we're at A, which is second reading of 2220-2405. Madam Lawyer, will you please?
I will. Ordinance 2024-05, an ordinance of the city of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 23 Land Development Regulations, Section 23.2-39 Affordable Workforce Housing Program and Providing for Separability, Conflicts Codification, and an Effective Date.
Great, thank you very much. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second for discussion?
Sure, a second for discussion.
Okay, great, thank you. And let's, so let's discuss, Mr. Waters, is this the one that I was asking you about with the ADUs?
Yeah, if you recall, William Waters, Community Sustainability Director, if you recall from our first reading, we left it in the most open state for you all to contemplate over the past two weeks and decide whether you wanted to allow, it appeared there was consensus to allow the affordable D restricted units in everything except for under line 83 and 84 under F. There seems to be Um, there seems to be a desire to eliminate providing these accessory dwelling units that would be deed restricted in the SFR, Single Family Residential District. So if that's your pleasure, we would just put after the word "any residential", a parentheses, "except single family residential SFR district parentheses, or any mixed use dwelling district."
Thank you. And just to be clear, I voted the way I did last week because I had some clarification I wanted to make in my own head about the difference between guest houses and, um, ADUs, and I was able to figure that one out. And, um, I have that, so that's one addition that I'd like to have in there. The other one is when you get to Section 23.1-12 in definitions, we talk about ADU and it says.
That's a different ordinance.
What?
That's a different.
Different, okay, tell me when we get to that one, because I'm gonna, okay, so, Mr. Diaz.
Um, sure, yeah, yeah, moving it forward, land use law, I guess it's like sculpture. Once you whittle something away, it's way hard to add that material back. So, you know, I suppose this second reading, we can talk about the whittling way of things. And, um, I do, would suggest, uh, you know, a recommendation of our boards, which they keep it out as SFR, but a little bit beyond that, I had some kind of, still some practical questions, and I've had some meetings with, uh, some neighborhoods regarding this, and, and I've definitely heard, you know, their comments and their concerns. And there's a, a couple of themes that stand out. One of them I definitely very much agree with, and it was in line with, um, I don't know if y'all got a chance to read that PDF, I think from Broward County that Ciara had presented, but, um, one of the things that it had talked about was the requirement of, uh, the primary unit be occupied or homestead exempted. Um, and I think there's, I, I understand the reasoning for that is because that's how you maintain the quality and a sense of place of that neighborhood. And regarding to, uh, you know, we have, not just us, like historically, we, the United States, have had a, a housing issue with, um, private equity firms, LLCs, or whatever you want to blame it on, acquiring houses and just kind of running them up and turning them into short-term rentals or whatever, that, things that the communities don't want. Um, and similarly for this regard, there's a, I think, a very valid and genuine concern of abuse, where, uh, when you have someone who owns the property, living on site, and is the landlord to this ADU, the quality of that relationship is going to be significantly higher than it was somebody, you know, out of town or just a faceless company. And so, um, I was just wondering, you know, what can we do to clarify and make that a requirement, uh, in this? I don't know if it needs to go as far as homestead exempted. I think owner occupied is, is, is really what, what the key is. Um, some people might choose not to be homestead exempted. I don't know if that, you know, I'm sure that exists, probably very few.
Or they haven't had the chance to do it yet.
Yeah, yeah, that too. Um, so that's one side of it. And then I, I kind of want to lay out, because I, I do like, in the ordinance, there's the process of like, providing the annual report and making sure there's compliance and whatnot. And I kind of want a little bit of an explainer, not just for me, but also for members of the community out there, kind of, uh, the pragmatic, realistic example, like how, uh, how's this gonna work out and be managed? And is it gonna be a heavy lift for staff to take on? Uh, you know, we had discussed previously that the potential of building ADUs throughout town, it's not going to be immense, it's going to be like double digits, even if it was 20 of them, it, it would be pretty novel. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to kind of have that discussion.
You mean enforcement? How do we enforce it?
Yeah, like, like, how, what does that look like? What does that process look like? But I guess what I'm mainly suggesting, if, if I were to make the motion, it would be the recommendation of, um, of our boards keeping it out of SFR, but also the owner occupied requirement.
So are you for the owner occupied requirement?
Okay, I think you're mixing apples and oranges.
Why don't you fix this?
This is a piece that's being amended to our affordable housing program. So are we saying that an apartment complex that provides affordable housing would have to be owner occupied?
Well, ADUs.
This isn't only just about ADUs. The only time that ADUs comes into effect is if it were being an additional dwelling unit in the SFR district. Now that you're eliminating that, the additional units could be, an apartment building may have five units versus four. Uh, there may be an SFTF14 district where there are already duplexes and they may add another unit. It could be an ADU, it may not be. But the only place where the ADU really came into effect, and it's covered under the Florida statute, um, that, um, our attorney Elizabeth described, is in the SFR district. Now that that's going away based on the consensus you have, um, I don't really know how to apply the homestead exempting of the owner occupied component to our affordable housing program.
Hmm, that's a bit of a dilemma.
And, um, and before we conclude fully on consensus.
Did you make a point?
Yes, thank you. Uh, before we conclude that there's full consensus to eliminate it from SFR, um, I, I find that not a very helpful suggestion, because probably most of the places that one might want to help relieve some of the housing crisis situation would in fact be in SFR areas. That said, uh, I inquired both at last meeting and since the last meeting, based on various of the aspects of what's proposed here, what is the likelihood that very many of these will and would in fact, if we approved it in SFR neighborhoods, in fact get built in SFR neighborhoods? And I don't know whether Mr. Waters wants to go through, but he sent me a list of nine reasons where his estimate, you know, and, and I, we all understand that it's an estimate, but it's a very educated estimate, um, is that the number that would get built, as Commissioner Diaz referred to, in SFRs is probably pretty small. So it's not a panic necessarily that, that, you know, we're going to be overrun by these things. Um, so I personally, only one of the advisory boards advocated not having them in SFRs. The other didn't comment on that, is my recollection. I personally would allow them.
Thank you. Um, Ms. May.
Um, so, yeah, no, I'm still against them being in the SFR district. Um, simply because people bought single family residences to have single family residences. And I don't, I, I, you know, I don't think that, I, I disagree. I don't think that that, excuse me, is where we're going to add affordable housing in the single family districts. I just don't see that happening. I see it happening in more multifamily districts, you know, along Dixie Highway and where we're building apartment buildings, you know, um, I just don't see it in single family. I've gotten a lot of residents that spoke out against that, and, um, you know, so if we took, I mean, I don't think we, I, with all due respect, Mr. Waters, we haven't decided to take out single family residents yet. But if, I, I suggest that we do, but we haven't made that decision yet.
I just suggested that.
Right, but you suggested that we take it out.
Correct.
But then you said that you wanted to have it be homesteaded, but the only way to homestead something would be in single family. So you can't have both.
I think that was pointed out by Mr. Waters.
Right, so.
Yeah, the, the main goal.
Mr. Diaz.
Uh, the point of bringing that up, and, and Mr. Waters is correct, you know, it's, it's clunky because you have apartment buildings and whatnot, but even in multifamily, there's still the potential of having a house with a ADU.
Like my house.
And that would be like, yeah, precisely, exactly, like, um, mayor's property. And that would be where we would want.
So are you suggesting adding to the other zonings? That there has to be, it has to be homesteaded and somebody needs to live there?
For multifamily?
Yeah.
Um, that was the question, is, I understand it to be a clunky thing to do.
That seems very restrictive.
And how could we accomplish? Is, in multifamily, if there's a property like the mayor's, you know, how do we, um, encourage, require the owner of the property, who's going to be the landlord of the ADU, to be on that property? This is excluding it from duplexes, triplexes, small apartment buildings.
Well, I think that would be an issue that would be dealt with in a different ordinance. And keep in mind that we already have lots of ADUs, both in the SFR district already, that are non-conforming, and throughout the city. And I would venture to guess, since we have like a 47 or 48% homeowner occupied percentage, that the vast majority of those ADUs are attached to principal structures where the owner does not live there. And so by default, I don't think we can go back in time and make all those people now have to be owner occupied. So we'd have a whole nother round of even more non-conformities in the city by requiring that. Um, I think Elizabeth and I have to put our heads together to see how we can maybe accomplish what you're, you're requesting, but I don't believe it is appropriate in the affordable housing ordinance section. It would be somewhere else.
Right, okay, and, because, I mean, I'm thinking, how could we do that? How could we carve that out? Because my, I mean, my property really is the example of, you know, if there's, um, a principal structure, in a multifamily district zoning here, if there's like one principal structure, that would be the, they, they, that one principal structure could have, would be owner occupied, and would be able to have an ADU. If it's a duplex or triplex or apartment building, that of course wouldn't make as much sense. But I think that a lot of people that do live in our multifamily, poorer neighborhoods, do have, we live in the front, and we have something in the back. And, um, so I think if we, not, okay, not with this particular ordinance, but I think it's something to look at in terms of where we allow them and how we do it. Because I'd like to see more, um, and one thing that, one of the thing that I was wanting clarification of, and you were helpful with this, is, um, if you live, it, it exists now that if you live in a single family district, you can build what's called a guest house or a pool house. And that is a separate structure or an attached structure? Could be, yeah, okay. That would be, um, that's why I want to change this language about mother-in-law or granny flat. Literally a granny flat, okay? You can have everything in there except a full kitchen. Those have been available to single family districts for a very long time. There's not a proliferation of them. And if you truly, if the, if the intent, as mine was when I bought my house, my granny needed a place to live. I had a granny flat. So, um, I think that because you, we already can have a single family residential guest house, pool house, whatever, I feel more strongly about taking it out of the single family district for the, of this, in this particular.
You can have a non-rented structure.
You can have, you just can't have a full stove.
You can't have a kitchen.
You can have a fridge, you can have a microwave.
Right, I mean, I have one of those, yeah. I mean, it's a room with a bathroom, basically, but it's detached from my main living space.
Okay, so, um, for future reference, I'd like to look at.
It's like the ordinance number.
Future could mean now, it could mean.
All right. So if we change this, if we change this motion so that we take out the single family or put in that little section that says not in single family. Um, yes, single family exempt, then we could, uh, move forward with this.
And that will be on line 83, under F.
Yep. Madam Mayor?
Ma'am.
Commissioner McBoy has his hand raised, and I do have some public comment.
Okay, I have public comments also. Mr. McBoy?
Yeah, um, I need a little help understanding this distinction between one form of housing that we do allow in single family neighborhoods, and apparently have a fair number of, um, and another form that we don't. And if I'm understanding it right, one can have an enclosed detached, or maybe attached either way, structure, and it's allowed, and you can rent it.
No, you can't rent it. Cameron cannot rent it. It's not an ADU.
Can I get confirmation from William on that?
Sure.
If we're referring to the conversation about single family residential, you're allowed to have one dwelling unit on the property. You can have a guest house that has no kitchen, and you can't rent it out. You can have a granny flat or a guest quarters that has no kitchen, and it cannot be rented out.
Okay, then, oh, that's helpful for me to understand. Now let me ask a question that's more difficult to answer. Of those that exist, do we have, anybody have any sort of estimate of whether that in fact is what we do? That, that we don't allow people to, you know, it's not allowed to rent them out, but I would be willing to bet that if people have those, a good deal of renting out happens. And I have a follow-up question, it's a little bit different.
Well, what's the, I mean, that's a statement, not a question.
No, my question is, if, if we in fact allow these structures, and we tell people, you can't rent them, I would venture to bet that a lot of people say, well, just gonna rent them, and I'm not gonna worry about it. I won't get a business license, and I'll rent it out, because it's available space, and I know there are people that need it. Um, and maybe they put a countertop stove in it, and maybe they don't, um, but I'll bet it happens. And so is it better to have de facto things going on? Or is it better to have it be explicit, what we do allow, and, you know, regulate it with, this ordinance has a good deal of restrictions in it? To me, it seems like it would be better to allow it and regulate it.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
I, I still have my follow-up question, though.
Oh, okay, here we go. Uh, go ahead.
Okay, so let's say that people are in fact not renting it out, which, you know, probably is true in some cases, but it's a guest house, and, uh, people come and stay in it. Are not all the issues of parking and various other concern, ancillary concerns that people have raised about ADUs, don't they apply just as much if it's a guest house? And if so, are, we allow one, but we don't allow the other?
Right.
Or we're considering not allowing it? That doesn't seem very consistent to me.
Well, life is full of inconsistencies, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I have not had a lot of complaint, I don't think we've had a lot of complaints about what the existing granny, uh, guest houses might be in the single family district. I've not heard any complaints about, because it's been, forever it's been allowed. So, um, I, I appreciate your concern. I don't know that there's an answer to that question. Do you have any answers?
I don't have an answer.
No one's got an answer for you, Mr. McBoy. It's, it's basically a rhetorical question. Mr. Diaz?
Um, I think there were some, some points in there to address. The, a key difference, it's not just the, you know, bathroom and kitchen, but a key difference is also being able to put meters on there and us being able to collect a bill. That's what makes it an ADU, right? And so, um, and so what.
Let's clarify. You are not required to have the two units be on separate meters.
You're not required, but it's encouraged.
You cannot sell electricity to your tenants, though.
Right.
It must be included in a monthly fee that's actually set or established, at least on an annual basis.
For ADU?
Most, most ADUs do have a separate, at least electric meter. Very few have a separate water meter.
Okay.
I do.
Oh, yeah, thank you for that clarification, yeah. So, um, so, you know, it's, it's similar dwellings, but it's a different use, is what, what it comes down to. And, uh, you know, the reason on keeping it out of SFR, and I think Commissioner May, you kind of touched on this, is, uh, you mentioned, you know, there, there, the density is essentially what we're talking, is more appropriate closer to Dixie Highway and, and what I would probably more call our, like, main transit corridors, because these dwellings, these ADUs, they're gonna be small enough and in a price range enough where I would say, especially these days, generally speaking, uh, the people who are gonna look to rent these kinds of dwellings probably don't have a whole lot of cars, if at all, and they're probably looking to live, you know, close to the downtown area or close to the things that they need to be able to access easily. And that's where, you know, that's where it would be more appropriate. And the reasoning for keeping it out of SFR is, you know, one, it's, we are an elected body, and it's a strong community asks to do it, but, um, there's also, you know, the, the other question that I kind of want to get us back on is the, the realistic, you know, um, enforcement of this. And, and it does kind of touch on what Commissioner McBoy, uh, mentioned. It's, look, we can, you know, we, we can't just pretend like it doesn't happen. Like, we, we kind of know that, especially in certain communities, that there's people paying rent in cash, and it is unfortunately happening. People are living in sheds, there's improper sublighting going on, all kinds of things like that. It's a million dollar question, how do we effectively enforce it? And how do we draw that, you know, bring that under control? And in a world like now, where affordability is, is just escaping the vast, like, more than half of our community, so, uh, that's a challenging thing to answer. I don't think any of us have an answer to it, but that's why I kind of wanted, you know, just to kind of maybe walk through this annual report, what does it look like? Uh, give a little bit of confidence to, uh, you know, the, the questions out there that at least I've. had from the community on, are we going to be able to follow through? And also, you know, if somebody sells the property and it transfers, like, how do we address that? How do we police that, essentially?
Well, it's like when, you know, we have a house which has big giant events every week, and they get, it's my cousin's wedding, it's my other cousin's wedding, it's my sister's wedding. I mean, she'll, you know, it's tough, you can't. Okay, so, where are we now? There's, yeah, we have public comment, but also, so we're making public comment then on an ordinance which is excluding single-family.
Well, that motion hasn't been amended yet.
Okay, hasn't been, okay, but that's what, so, you, yeah, who made the motion? You did?
McVeigh made the motion.
Mr. McVeigh, do you want to amend your motion?
Well, I think reading the room, I'm seeing three people who want to amend the motion to exclude SFR, or SFR. So I guess so.
Is that a yes? Is that an amendment?
I think that's a reluctant yes.
And the second agrees with the amendment?
Yeah, I would second that.
Okay, thank you. Now we have public comment. I've got two cards here, and I think I'm going to have a third. Mr., you can just give it to me. Thank you. And, okay, I mean, yes, 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 and yes to all three of your cards. Let's start with Greg Richter. Having heard what we're talking about, hopefully that will address some of your concerns.
Well, first of all, I like everything I've heard so far. Thank you for that. Greg Richter, 1202 South Palmway. I come for you guys tonight for the first time, not as an individual, but as president of South Palm Park Neighborhood Association. I've been asked to come up here and talk on behalf of our neighborhood to convey our opposition to ADUs in single-family residential, and a lot of the opposition that you have been articulated here on the podium. Basically, you know, the idea, there was no talk about homesteading, how do you deed, what happens if a house sells, how does this process work? There was a lot of loose ends on that. There was concerns about the enforcement of the 25-year deed, you know, how it's actually being handled. We have so many things here that we don't enforce, and it's just another one that we add. The third thing, several years ago, this came up, and the city, you know, came up before. There was an overwhelming opposition of doing this in single-family neighborhoods. I'm going to make it short this week. I appreciate Commissioner Diaz came to our neighborhood meeting, took it on. We had a very respectful dialogue on it, but I think the message was loudly clear. We were, we are against that, and I like what I'm hearing.
And we agree.
And I'm going to stop.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We've got two more people that we agree with coming up to speak. Anthony Segrits? Am I saying your name right?
Segrits.
Segrits, okay, sorry.
Anthony Segrits, 601 South Palmway. So, couple of comments, and thank you for this discussion, very informative. It really changes, I think, the feeling that a lot of people have had towards this. In terms of the numbers to be built, as a real estate agent, I see this all the time. The primary question I get asked about any duplexes, can I turn that garage into an ADU? So I think you'd be surprised, I'm willing to bet almost every duplex sold to an investor is going to build an ADU.
Where footage?
So if you're, if you're not allowing them in single-family residential, but you're allowing them in two-family or multi-unit, 10-unit or less, or mixed-use and so on, all you're basically doing is going from two to three, four to five, 10 to 11, et cetera. You're really not changing much with this, and I think you might add, you know, a number of problems. Primarily, parking. One of the biggest issues this city has to have is parking. It's one of the primary negatives that people raise about short-term rentals and so on. To address, you know, Commissioner Diaz saying that, you know, these people aren't going to have cars, I would challenge you to go to our sections of the city that are considered to be lower income. You cannot find a parking space. That is totally false. They have more cars.
More people.
You know, these units are going to bring parking issues, and any amendment to our code really needs to address the parking, if you are going to move forward with it. Looking at this, some of the other things that happen from a real estate perspective is the subsidies that are given to them for the affordable housing. It's kind of a money grab. A lot of people are looking at building these purely to get the money, and then turn around and selling it to unsuspecting people, not knowing there's a 25-year deed restriction and so on. We're already seeing, you know, deals coming to the table where they're saying that they're going to do this, and so they're artificially inflating their prices, which doesn't help affordability at all. And lastly, thinking this is going to solve affordability, it's really not. Your own study that the city ordered, the primary factors that are affecting affordability? Taxes, rise in insurance, and massive population influx into Florida.
Thank you, that's time.
Thank you. Mr. Morata?
Anthony Morata, 327 North Lakeside Drive, Lake Worth Beach. Thank you very much for listening. I want to commend Commissioner Diaz. He came to our Paracave meeting last night. We had very positive discussion. It's nice to see our elected officials listening to the feedback from the community, and not just striking down everything, saying, you know, everyone opposes it, but amending it to the feedback that they hear. You know, that cooperation is certainly appreciated. Similar to what Greg Richter said, I've been up here representing Paracove in the past, and the neighborhood was vehemently against the, you know, widespread opening up of the ADUs. And many of us have them, myself included. I mentioned to Commissioner Diaz last night, on my block alone, we have at least six of them. Most of them that I know of are similar to mine, which they're, they're legal, nonconforming ADUs. I have a full-on kitchen and everything. I would like to contest Mr. McVeigh's point, where he states that the occasional visitor would have the same problems as a full-time resident. When my family comes to visit me a couple of times a year, and I put them out there, they don't have a car. They're there for a couple of weeks. To even bring that point up just seems like a very strange and unusual, and then totally inapplicable. So I use mine as a true guest house. Family comes, stays at it. I also call it my Florida basement, because people have basements up north, they come down here, where they put all your crap. Right? So use the, the ADU for that as well. And that's really about it. Thank you very much for listening to us, and appreciate it, helping us keep the character of our single-family neighborhoods that we all bought. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. But.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
I just have a quick question for William on something that Mr. Segrits said. Could somebody take a garage and turn it into an ADU and take away the garage aspect of the house?
Well, I heard from the background, but legally, no. The required parking cannot be eliminated, and in our code with the single-family or in the ADUs, you have to provide an onsite parking space. Part of the analysis was that, and I think, you know, we're ending up, we're not achieving much of an egg, in the fact that many houses don't have room to build an ADU.
Right.
I mean, properties, they don't have room to provide the parking without losing parking, so they can't do that part. So there will probably be some accessory structures that are converted through this, but they still have to provide the parking that was already there at the site, as well as parking for the new unit that is created. We have conversions that we catch a lot, that seem to happen overnight over the weekend. I don't know how they build them so fast, but they do. I can't, you know, give you a definitive number on how many. We do find a lot of them when someone comes to get a business license for that illegal conversion, and we're like, it's not supposed to be there. And then it becomes a civil issue between the new per, the new owner and the previous owner, and the real estate person who sort of offered it out as being legally done and when it wasn't. So I encourage everybody who's buying a property, please call our office and look, and check the permit records and the business license history.
I see.
Because we have a lot going back many, many, many years that were never appropriately done. And because it looks like it's still a house, we can't tell from the street that it's actually been, you know, because my staff, a lot of us are fairly new, some of these conversions happened 20 years ago and didn't get a permit. But as we catch them, we try to bring them into compliance.
So when they have to have the parking, do they have to have it off-street parking?
It has to be on the property, yes. On the new unit.
And the other thing which makes it hard is you, you know, the lot coverage in terms of impermeable, you have to have enough space to do.
Yes.
To do it. So it's not like they're going to be jumping up all over. So, Madam Clerk, you have some public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have four. Georgia Clemetsmo, 75 18th Avenue South. Many homeowners, including myself, have invested our life savings in our homes and properties. I am against additional dwelling units in a single-family neighborhood. I paid a premium to live in this neighborhood, and I at least expect it to stay a single-family. I'm extremely disappointed to city is not monitoring short-term rentals. Now they want to add ADUs. I am definitely against this. Please vote now for that item. Thomas and Barbara Sweat, 66 18th Avenue South. We have been residents of Lake Worth Beach for 30 years. We are totally against the proposal of additional dwelling units being allowed in single-family neighborhoods. Over the past few years, our neighborhood has turned into half-short-term rentals. These Airbnbs have caused extra cars congesting the streets. Some days, garbage and trash trucks can't do their jobs. With the addition of ADUs, it can only cause additional problems. More people, more cars, more trash, more wear on utilities. If all these short-term rentals were not allowed, there would be more homes and apartments available for people to live. The addition of ADUs are just exacerbating the problem. Next is Carlos Ramirez, 64 18th Avenue South. I am completely against it. We already have enough Airbnb in our area. This will only bring more people and more cars on our streets. Lake Worth is already getting congested enough as it is. And the last comment I have is from Ramsey Stevens, 618 South K Street. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, I am writing to publicly express the deep frustrations shared by myself and my neighbors regarding the ongoing litter and parking crisis affecting our downtown and historically disadvantaged neighborhoods. Before pursuing any further density increases, however well-intentioned they may be, I urge you to prioritize addressing these pressing problems first. Our community is already struggling with a myriad of problems stemming from a historic lack of equitable governance and basic density management practices. Increasing density without first addressing the growing disparities in our quality of life and level of service throughout the city will only exacerbate our city's already spiraling inequity and socioeconomic stratification. It is crucial that we focus on creating neighborhoods that are truly inclusive, mixed-income, and equitable, ensuring that all residents benefit from improved living conditions and opportunities. As our elected officials, it is your responsibility to ensure that all our neighborhoods are clean, safe, and environmentally healthy. I implore you to take immediate action by implementing comprehensive litter and parking management programs in accordance with proven given practices, I'm sorry, proven best practices, such as alternate side parking and residential parking permits. Addressing these issues will ensure we all live in a more equitable, healthy, and thriving community that can be responsibly supportive, support more density. That's my final comment for this evening, and just to let you know, you have 12 minutes and 25 seconds left on this item.
Sarah's not here to remind us. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, it was amended.
We already did the motion amended.
No, no, a motion to extend the time. All right, well, let's do this first.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have an amended motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All, let's see, unanimous, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, do I have a motion about time?
Oh, motion to extend the meeting.
A half hour?
Well, how much more do we have?
I think it's going to have to be an hour. Let's not take the whole hour.
What, you want to say an hour?
Yeah.
You have to make the motion to extend to 11:00 PM.
Oh, make the motion to extend to 11.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It doesn't mean we have to be here till 11.
Right. It's not a commitment.
I'm trying to narrow this down, Madam Clerk.
The second is needed.
What? I didn't hear. You seconding that motion, sir?
I already did.
That was, to me, yeah, the audio goes in and out, so.
Okay, so it's, there's been a motion? There's a motion, a second, to go to 11. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Of course, there's only six where he is. Yeah.
I did have a.
Oh, yeah.
I did have a quick comment before we move on to the next thing, because the, this ADU especially was a really good reminder for two things.
Okay.
Just as a reminder to ourselves, I know we're already working on one, which is what, you know, you have brought up in the past, Mayor, about code enforcement, being able to go into properties. I suspect that would be really helpful into helping us crack down on some of these. And then the other thing, and thank you, Jamie, for bringing it up when we had that discussion about the strategic plan, a meeting or two ago? Gosh, it's all blending together. It's had a budget. I had brought up in the past about discussing or planning the expansion of the CRA. And the reason why I bring that up here is because, and I've had discussion with someone in CRA staff, at least, and I know they haven't had the official conversation of working in ADUs into some of their projects, but I know there's a little bit of excitement and maybe one day, you know, working with some of our partners and, because if you, I just have kind of this daydream constantly of, you know, one of our partners, like, take for example Habitat, right? So their goal is to get people to own homes. Well, imagine if, you know, we could, or CRA could help Habitat get people to own a home that also generates wealth through rental revenue. And I think that, you know, we're appropriate, obviously, in multifamily, and I just wanted to kind of take that moment to use it as a reminder that, you know, I hope sometime we can get to having that discussion.
About?
About expanding the.
The CRA, yeah. And.
And the code enforcement getting on, which I think is already being worked on.
And extending the CRA in terms of time. Madam Attorney, you're up. This is a long one.
This one's my favorite.
This is your favorite one?
Ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 23 Land Development Regulations, Article 1, General Provisions, Division 2, Definitions, Section 23.1-12, Definitions, Article 2, Administration, Division 3, Permits, Section 23.2-28, Administrative Adjustments, Administrative Use Permits, Article 3, Zoning Districts, Division 2, Residential Districts, Section 23.3-7, SFR, Single Family Residential, Section 23.3-8, SFTF14, Single Family and Two-Family Residential, Section 23.3-10, MF20, Multi-Family Residential, Section 23.3-11, MF30, Medium Density, Multi-Family Residential, and Section 23.3-12, MF40, High Density, Multi-Family Residential. Article 3, Zoning Districts, Division 3, Mixed-Use Districts, Section 23.3-13, MUE, Mixed-Use East, and Section 23.3-16, MUFH, Mixed-Use Federal Highway. Article 4, Development Standards, Section 23.4-3, Exterior Lighting, Section 23.4-4, Fences, Walls, and Gates, Section 23.4-16, Mechanical Systems, Equipment for Existing Residential Structures, and Section 23.4-19, Outdoor Storage and Open-Air Operations. Article 5, Supplemental Regulations, Section 23.5-1, Signs, and Section 23.5-4, Historic Preservation, Providing for Severability, Conflicts, Codification, and Ineffective Date.
Thank you, ma'am. Okey-dokey. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I would ask, this is where the title, I'm a little having trouble.
We're going to go through a couple of things. Again, William Walters, Community Sustainability Director. Annie Greening, who's our new principal planner, is going to go over, has some information she can help provide to clarify what happened at our last meeting. But in our discussion, line 230, under accessory dwelling unit, there's been a request to delete what was now in our code, the words also known as a mother-in-law or granny flat. That would just come out, and then it would be an accessory dwelling unit, ADU is an additional dwelling, additional living unit, blah, 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 whatever. If you go to line 276 and 277, we provided a more appropriate definition of string lights. So that represents the changes that you requested. If you go, continue on to line 488 through 506, we provided a more thorough inclusion of what would be allowed in terms of string lights. I do want to make note that on line 502, item 4, string is missing an R, so we'll have to put that R.
Sting lights.
Yeah, I have those in my backyard. They're supposed to kill mosquitoes. They really don't do a very good job. Thank you again to Elizabeth for helping to deal with the nuisance issues that might come. come out of string lights. And then we also edited a little bit the last piece, which is under line 659 through 666, which there needed to be a little bit of that removed to be compliance with Florida statute. There is an item that we kind of inadvertently missed that was brought up by the Planning and Zoning Board in terms of how to define floor error ratio and building lot coverage. And I'm gonna let Annie go over that. And this is affecting lines 242 through 244.
Wait, so go back to 242?
Okay, but before you do that, you added this number seven, line 659 to 666.
We took out part of something that was, didn't need to be there.
But this is all new, correct?
It's all new, but when the language that you saw last time had a little bit of extra language that didn't need to be there. So it's been now taken out. So it complies with Florida statute.
What line?
Okay, so this, it's essentially new language, which says you can demolish a non-contributing single-family residential structure in a special flat house.
Yes. What it had before is we had to notify the Historic Resources Preservation Board.
Right.
The state statute says we don't have to do that. We will apprise them of it, but we're not, the state statute prohibits us requiring that the HRPB be notified of this happening.
Okay, but a contributing structure cannot be demolished?
Contributing structure cannot.
So we're gonna let them go underwater? I mean.
There's a different, well, if you want to be out of here by 11, we can't get in that conversation tonight. That's a whole nother bow of the Uic, a big ball of wax.
All right.
This is just adopting what's in the Florida statute that we're required to have.
Okay. All right. And this is, we're still fine with second reading? So.
Yes, on that, on that section, all the, there were, it was deleted that the HRPB would given, given an opportunity to comment.
Perfect.
That little phrase was deleted. The rest was there on first reading.
And we're taking out that definition, granny flat thing? Okay.
And then Ms. Greening has a little bit to go over.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On building lot coverage.
Great.
Where is she?
What line?
So we are on, starts on line 238. We're in Exhibit A.
We're going back. Hold on.
Yeah, sorry, we're backing up to the beginning here.
To what?
Building, 238, Exhibit A. Building lot coverage.
All right, so this one, as we were watching back the video of the last meeting to prep for this one, you all had discussed this section but hadn't included it in your motion, so we just wanted to bring it back to your attention. This definition of building lot coverage, it's having language added about whether or not depth of an overhanging roof or similar feature would count towards that lot coverage. The Historic Resources Preservation Board had not recommended any amendments to this, but the Planning and Zoning Board had discussed changing that two-foot depth allowance to three feet, provided that it maintains the minimum setback for fire safety reasons. So we just wanted to bring that back to your attention. On the screens, we've got, you know, as written in the ordinance right now, and then as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board, yeah, we just wanted to bring it to your attention in case you.
To go from two to three?
Yeah.
And staff felt that was fine.
Right, makes sense. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Does the motion maker want to amend the motion?
Was that a motion maker?
Who was the motion maker? Who made the motion?
Commissioner Diaz made the motion. Commissioner May seconded it.
There we go.
I just have a question. I mean, yeah, you can do that part.
No.
I can't change it.
Right, I'll amend for those changes.
Two to three.
I'm sorry, could you speak into your mic, Commissioner?
I'll amend for those changes, as recommended.
That we talked about.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Including the deletion of some of the phrase, the definition of accessory dwelling unit.
Right. Ms. May, do you agree with the amendment?
I agree with that amendment, yes.
Okay, do you have a question?
I do. My question is on page, line 502. Actually, it's kind of on 504 to 507. Just, I mean, it's kind of, kind of detailed, but where it says, "Allow for string lights with intermittent lighting synchronized with audible music." So unless you have music, you can't have, like, lights flashing on your house at Christmas?
You can't have light flash, oh, it says just.
No, this is in December, so you have all of the people who have, like, the little light shows.
This is allowing that during.
But it's saying that you can only have it when it's in line with synchronized music. I'm saying, can't you have lights without music?
Okay.
The way I read it, it sounded like you have to have music to go with your lights.
It's what it's saying, is that during the month of December is the only time you can have lights blinking or flashing that is synchronized to music.
Or at all.
No, because it says you can't have any lights that are flashing or blinking except December.
You're right.
And then it says, "In December," an exception will be made to this provision to allow string lights with intermittent lighting synchronized with audible music. I think you should take out synchronized with audible music.
Right. Yep, so that would be another amendment.
Sir, would you amend your motion?
Just as a reminder, I mean, I think we added that in because Mr. Waters, you, we were trying to think about, like, those fancy things that, you know, seeing Christmas carols and flash the lights, because otherwise that would be prohibited.
Right, but I think what her point is, if I may.
Sure.
Is that I may have twinkling lights and.
No music.
And music.
It's always in December.
Whether or not with music?
Right.
I got you, okay.
Right. If you take out synchronized with audible music, you can put music.
Right.
But if you don't take that out, then you have to put music.
Right.
And that could get really annoying, depending on what music I pick.
I said.
Says her neighbors.
But if we're concerned about annoying, there's plenty of pulsing, blinking, flashing lights that are pretty annoying, too.
Yeah, but it's only for a month.
Yeah, but we're gonna annoy people in December.
Just for a month. They'll be happy it's over. Okay, so do we have further amendment?
I'll make that, add that to the amendment to remove the synchronized with audible music.
And will the seconded person?
I will, yes, second that amendment.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Inaudible music would have been better.
Inaudible music. That's my favorite line. All right.
I second that motion.
Now we are on, no, no, it was a good point, actually. And that's gonna be the thing that we get caught at, right? Okay, so now C. Ordinance 2024-7, second reading.
Ordinance 2024-07, an ordinance of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 23 Land Development Regulations, Article 4 Development Standards, Section 23.4-25, Micro Units, and Providing for Severability, Conflicts, Codification, and An Effective Date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Motion.
Motion to approve.
Do I, well, you can be the second, Mr. McVoy. Mimi May beat you to it. So it was a motion by.
Discrimination against faraway people, but okay, I'll go with it.
That's what it is, that's what it is. Okay, so we have a motion by Mimi May, seconded by Commissioner McVoy. All in favor?
Hold on, I just want to make clear that in the ordinance that you've had before, your line 49 shows in yellow what you agreed to, which was a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board, as well as line 58 and 59, which are highlighted in yellow with red. So that's reflective of what you recommended to move forward from first reading, but it wasn't shown in the original ordinance, so that's there now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. New business.
All right.
A, new business A. This is a request from the developer of the, where's the residences of Lake Worth?
At the end of Second Avenue North on the north side, by the Keller Cornell.
Over there, okay. Request from the developer of the residents of Lake Worth Beach to waive the required sustainable bonus incentive program fee to the city. Mr. Waters?
Yes, again, it's William Waters, Community Sustainability Director. I don't recall when this project was originally approved, whether it was the sitting commission or the previous commission.
No, it was our commission.
This is the third attempt to develop this site, and as the Richmond Group has moved along, they have an opportunity to try to make the entire project deed-restricted as other affordable or workforce housing, whereas our current ordinance and approval only provides for a very, 15% of it to be affordable. So in furtherance of that goal to have it be mostly, or if not all, affordable, they're requesting that the sustainable bonus payment that came out of that project of almost $450,000 be waived. And part of the demonstration to show the value to the city is that under our Affordable Workforce Housing Program, if you were incentivizing a developer to provide more than the 15% required housing, this project would end up costing the city $678,000 to provide that additional housing. So they felt justified in requesting that waiver of that money based on the fact they were providing substantially more affordable deed-restricted homes in order as required by our code. The developer is here, they can explain that they do have a little bit of an option. There's been a little bit of a change in the request since it originally was put in the system two weeks ago or so, is that their request is contingent on the county providing them of workforce housing money and the bond. If that money does not come from the county, then maybe you can explain what happens next.
That was my question, right there.
I don't want to speak for you.
Okay, let me just, it's a little confusing. The remaining six units of the project have an incentivized value of $678. What does that mean?
Six, okay. Under our Affordable Housing Program, let's just say you're required to provide two affordable units out of 10. And you wanted two more. Under our program, we have an incentivization payment that can be made out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to get those two additional units to be affordable.
Right.
Well, their justification for requesting this waiver is that they are offering to have the whole project be deed-restricted, which under our ordinance, if we were demanding it of them, would cost us $678,000.
Okay, but we're not.
But we're not.
Okay.
But your housing study does.
I'm sorry?
Your housing study does.
My housing study?
The one that was done for my FAU.
Right, I mean, saying we should have more affordable housing.
Yes.
Right, at the cost of almost a lot of money. Hi, why don't you introduce yourself and.
Hi, my name is Jesse Wappel. I'm with the Richmond Group, 477 South Rosemary Avenue, West Palm Beach. And to answer the first question, if we don't get the county bonds, then likely we would have to revert back to just providing the minimum affordability, you know, per zoning approval, and the rest would be market rate. Now, we, we obviously understand the dire need in Palm Beach County and in Lake Worth for affordable housing units, and, which is why we decided to change course and try to go through the county and get those bonds, and why we're making this, you know, request for, you know, a significant fee waiver, but, you know, on a $70 million project, it's helpful, but obviously we need the county bonds to obviously supplement this, to make this work. Anything that you all can, can waive for us would help with costs where they are and, you know, the world, there's a dearth of affordable housing here. There's nowhere for the workers of Palm Beach County to live. I mean, a large majority of them have to live in, you know, Port St. Lucie or other areas, or move out of South Florida in general because they can't afford to live here. I think this is a very good opportunity for the City of Lake Worth Beach to have 195 affordable housing units for the next 50 years. And, you know, we, we request that you, you know, consider any amount that you can waive of the sustainability fee would be helpful, obviously, from an economic standpoint, but also with the county, we could say, you know, the city is in favor of this, and they've also contributed, you know, to helping us figure the capital stack out to provide these units. So, you know, there's twofold benefits.
So you'd be getting help from the county and from us?
Absolutely. Well, the county, we're requesting $17 million in bonds, we're, you know, requesting $450,000 of fee waiver from you all, but it's very significant because these deals are super thin if you want to have affordable housing and workforce housing. So that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you.
Trying to make this deal, you know, happen and.
Two points to bring up, too, is that the county is requiring a deed restriction that's twice as long as the city's.
Okay.
So we require 25 years, the county's requiring 50. So, and again, and you had mentioned that, I think in our conversation, that they don't get the money from the county, then they would be open to paying the sustainable bonus because the whole, most of the project, they won't be market rate. So this is a contingency waiver.
On them getting the money.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. May?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you, Ms. May.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that question because I knew that there was, that there was an issue possibly with the bonds from the county. Do you have a timeframe? Have they told you anything regarding that?
So the next, they tabled it at the last hearing. The next hearing is June 4. I was gonna ask if any of you were, you know, in favor of this project and bringing these affordable units to the city, if you, if someone could, you know, support us, either write a letter or show up and speak on behalf of the project getting funding. But to answer your question, it's June 4 is when we'll know what they decide to do with the workforce housing bonds.
Okay.
For your specific project.
Ours and several others, there's.
Yeah, I want to watch their meeting first.
We're the only one, I believe, in Lake Worth, though.
Okay, thank you.
And the contingency, if you didn't read the article, the concern, and the county's unfortunately kind of digging itself in a hole, when they advocated for the housing bond money, they were trying to deliver 20,000 housing units at the cost of $200 million. It appears that the first round of funding requests has generally almost exceeded half that request in the delivery of 1,500 units, not 10,000. So that was why it was tabled, is that they're not getting as much bang for the buck as they would like, and so the commission, the Board of County Commissioners, sent staff back to reevaluate, this is county staff, what was happening. I have agreed to go support the Richmond Group if I can get out of another meeting, but there's a lot happening on the 28th, so I can't be more than placed, but it is a need, but I believe the county may have overstretched its promises, when if you work it out dollar-metrically, it's only $10,000 of a subsidy for each of those 20,000 units. And we are finding just for houses that were created under the NSB2 program for homeownership, some of the subsidies on those were like $75,000. That was in 2009, 10, and 11. So the goal to try to encourage, and also the Housing Coalition had recommended, and I don't know where the County Board came on this, that the projects be allowed to stack incentives. The recommendation from the county staff at the time was that if you're already getting an incentive or a bonus from a municipality or some other entity, you shouldn't be able to qualify for additional money from the county. Well, as Jesse mentioned, the margins are so razor-thin, stacking is almost the only way you can get the units to hit the 80% AMI or even the 60%, and in this case, some of them are going to be hitting 100% AMI, which sounds like a lot, but if you, the median household income, just since I've lived here, I worked from Lake Worth Beach, has gone up by over 100%. And so there are people, you know, you may think $104,000 a year is a lot of money, but the median, that's what the median household income for four is in the county now. And a study just came out in Palm Beach Post, maybe two weeks ago, three weeks ago, that said the average, the typical single person to live comfortably in the county needs to be making over $90,000 a year. Well, that's more than two schoolteachers make, or a firefighter and a police person, or most of our staff in the county, I mean, at the city, I would say 85, 90% of the staff don't make that, and they're trying to, and they're trying to, like, you know, so the affordability of housing is a crisis in the terms that the incomes are not keeping up either, and we can't do a whole lot about that. But being able to bring, you know, almost 200 units that will serve that missing middle, because if you're, if you're really destitute, there, you know, there's Section 8, there's a, and that, granted, they've got a waiting list, it's out the wazoo, but there are people who don't really qualify for housing assistance that just have nowhere to live, and they're our staff. They're the people that come to work here every day. We have lost a number of staff and opportunities to hire people because I can't afford to move to Florida, or I can't afford to live as far away from my workplace of work, because the cost of getting there is eating away at what I was saving where I'm gonna live. And we've had people, like, take a job here, and they end up getting a job in Port St. Lucie or Fort Pierce or someplace, because they just can't afford to commute here anymore. And so bringing housing of this type here is really critically important for a whole myriad of reasons.
Can there be a restriction favoring Lake Worth City employees, residents?
That would be something that Jesse would have to sort of...
I mean, is it legal? Can you do it?
Well, if there's fair housing laws and that sort of thing, but what we can do is we can make sure we give you marketing, you know, as soon as lease-up starts and, you know, through construction, so you have every opportunity to be the first to apply.
Mr. Diaz, Mr. Diaz, Mr. McVoy, see your hand up, and Mr. Diaz, add it up first.
Thank you for all that good news, William. Do you have any others?
This is a cheerful...
Very cheerful.
Debbie Dow.
Yeah. You know, I, thank you for that update though, because I have a very genuine concern, and this is more of a curiosity on both, if you have, I'm sure you both of you have a really good pulse on what the county's going through right now, because that bond, to put it lightly, is being heavily scrutinized right now. And, and, you know, you said, not as a slight to you, but, you know, you said anything waived would help, and I'm like, I'm sure it does, and that's kind of what the criticism is based on from a lot of people, is, yeah, of course, developers want, you know, more help, and, and, you know, we have to determine how much that is. And my concern is the county and even some of the county commissioners have been really scrutinizing this bond, which we need so much, and do you think it's going to, like, negatively, what kind of effect would it have? I think it could either negatively impact how they give out these, this money, it might slow them down, or it might, it might make them give a mad rush to pay for the projects like yours that actually have a whole lot of units in it. So I'm just kind of curious, but what you're kind of expecting, if anything, and that you're June 4th, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to be honest, we were all very caught off guard at the last hearing because, you know, there's an RFP and there's a process by which they choose the developments that they think are the best for, you know, candidates for the bonds and all that, and a small, a short list of people got recommended for funding, and we were fully anticipating them, you know, rubber stamping it there, and they didn't. So what do I expect? I hope that, you know, they'll come along and honor what basically the city, you know, the county's RFP was, and everyone submitted and was, you know, compliant with what the RFP was. So obviously, self-serving, I hope that they approve it and they move forward. But on a higher level, they issued, you know, the bonds, or they haven't issued them yet, but they allocated the bonds for this, so I think it's even worse optics to do something like that and then get very few units at all from it. So, you know, my personal opinion is, you have to try to get as many sources of money as you can, which is why I'm here right now. And what makes it super difficult is they want workforce housing, as William said, the missing middle, and there's no subsidies for that, as he pointed out. If, you know, if it was ELI, you know, extremely low income or low income units, you could have tax credits and a whole bunch of other, you know, funding sources. But their goal was workforce housing on this specific RFP, and then they were kind of complaining about the money that they would have to spend to get the housing that they say they want. So, in a nutshell, I hope that they approve it, but it's out of my control, so if they don't, we would have to pivot and try to figure it out, you know, the conventional way, which I don't think is the best for the City of Lake Worth Beach or Palm Beach County. I mean, there's a lot of very expensive market rate housing around, but the fact of the matter is, the majority of the workers here can't afford to live there. So, I, you know, I hope that they approve it.
Thank you. Mr. McVoy? Mr. McVoy? Dr. McVoy?
Sorry. There we go, I only come in on Dr. No, it was inadvertently muted. I have the video off because I've had a lot of trouble with the sound just disappearing.
That's fine.
So I'm hoping that taking the video off helps with that, because Melissa assures me that it's at my end, not at Lake Worth. I want to first thank Jesse W., because I can't remember the last full name off the top of my head, but I want to thank, I had communications with Mr. Waters and with him during the day, and he was very quick to respond and help out with information. I want to be clear that I am very much in the favor of truly affordable housing being built in Lake Worth, so let there be no mistake about that. My concern for a long time has been with things that we call workforce housing. When you look at the actual numbers of what that means, it's way out of the range, as William was referring to, of most of the people in Lake Worth, including our city employees. And I, looks like the video is locked up, so I'm just going to assume that you can hear me and it unlocks.
We can hear you loud and clear, Mr. McVoy.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. So I tried to do a little calculation, or my concern with workforce housing is that it's really got very little to do with, and not necessarily for the developer's, you know, fault, but the way that it's defined, it just is out of range for our folks. And so what I try to always do on these things is when I see the rent, and I, we all know by now the rule that the recommendation is 30% of your income, so it's pretty easy to do the calculation. So I have a table kindly provided by Jesse that I asked for. On the affordable units, which would be here, it looks like 40 out of the roughly 200 units, the one bedroom is listed max rent at $1,1205. If you work that out to the rule of 30% of your income, that income to afford that would have to be $48,000. If you work that out to an hourly wage, that's $24 an hour. I don't know of many jobs in Lake Worth that get paid anything like 24. I've asked around for teachers and things, and it's more like in the 15, 16, 17, 18 range, so you couldn't afford it. And that's for the so-called affordable ones. The workforce one, if I look at the one-bedroom max rate, or max rent, is just over $2,000. That works out to $80,000 a year to be able to afford that under the 30% rule, which is even further out of range. That's like $40 an hour. I, as a PhD, barely got paid that, now, a number of years ago at the Water Management District. So my concern is, and I don't know the answer to this one, my concern is that if you look at the numbers, it's neither the affordable, and certainly not the workforce, is really very accessible to people in Lake Worth. That gives me pause about us giving them a break on the sustainability. The bigger question, which I don't have an answer, and I'm certainly open to input from William and my colleagues, is, okay, that's probably true, that this isn't really going to be very helpful for affordable housing, but is it better than not doing it? I don't really have a way to answer that, which is frustrating to me, but I'm very open to hearing other people's thoughts, once you've, everybody's sort of wrapped their heads around that just to get in the door at a one-bedroom, you need to make $24 an hour. And I don't think there's too many of us that do that. So if somebody could, could speak to the issue of, are we, you know, on paper, it sounds great until you do the calculations, and then it doesn't sound quite so good. Should we be waiving the fee if it doesn't in fact help us? And please, somebody help me and convince me that it's...
Finish that sentence.
What I would add is that there are a number, I won't say a ton, but there are employees in Lake Worth Beach who would enjoy living in Lake Worth Beach, who cannot afford to live here, but could afford to live in that one-bedroom unit. And that one-bedroom unit may, and it can include two people. So if you split it to two people, making $12.50 an hour, they can afford to live there.
Right. Go ahead, I'll go with that.
No, the only thing I was going to say also is the 30% is ideal, but not really practical in 2024 right now. I mean, it's ideal, I mean, everyone would like to be able to divide it up that way, but I think people are planning on spending a little bit more than that on their rent, unfortunately.
Their deed restrictions require the person, whatever the income is, cannot exceed that, so unless there's like a magic apparition where everybody shows that makes exactly the right amount of money, some of those units will actually rent for a little bit less than that number, because the people that are coming in there can only afford to spend 30% of their gross income.
So that's going to be a rule?
That's part of...
That is the rule, okay.
That's already...
Okay.
The other thing that, you know, is jeopardizing the county's goal on housing is the 50-year covenant. It's really, really difficult for a for-profit entity. The depreciation schedule is 27 and a half years. There's already an assumption made under our program that there's going to be, have to be a significant investment in a property after 20 years or so to, like, fix it back up again. Well, there will be no money coming from the county because they've already got the deed restriction. They're going to be tied into those rental rates for 50 years. Our program has a caveat where we would, the city would encourage them to be, continue to be affordable after the 25 years, but provided a subsidy to that owner, whoever it might be. I think the 50-year covenant, that the county wants a lot of the money paid back in some fashion at some percentage rate. The interest rates have more than doubled since the bond referendum was approved. Construction costs have not come down. There are a lot of things working against the housing bond referendum being anywhere near as successful as it was envisioned or put out there to be by the Housing Coalition in the county. And I'm not denigrating anyone, because they've spent a lot of time working on it, but I don't see how $200 million is ever going to achieve 20,000, 20,000 units unless you stack multiple incentives together and waive some of, especially the nonprofit entities, from having to pay the money back.
Here's, when I read this at first, $444,000, and we're working on our budget. And $444,000 is a lot of money to give away, to walk away from, given our budget. So I'm feeling like we're balancing between our, the city's needs for cash and the promise, perhaps, of more affordable housing. So it's a kind of a Hobson's Choice in my, in my estimation, because, yes, we do need the housing, but we also need the money. So I, I'm in a quandary about it, frankly, and, you know, it is, although it's, I understand that building prices are going up and all that, but it is still a for-profit organization. I mean, you're not...
Right. Well, just so you know, on this deal specifically, we're actually kicking in a very significant amount of money as well, which is atypical of affordable housing, and we're deferring more than half of our developer fees. So, I mean, I understand your point, but that's how thin these deals are. You know, you say it's for profit, but this specific deal, not much profit to be made.
How about we propose...
Mr. McVoy, would you like to speak?
I would love to.
There we go.
I hear you, Madam Mayor, on the Hobson's Choice, and I hear you, and I appreciate that we have, as a commission, made, you know, sort of a verbal moral commitment to try to do something, and we have done a bit on affordable housing. We've done a lot in terms of our ordinances and things to find creative ways. So I think we all want to be helpful in that. What about taking up the offer that was made, well, any help you can do, and split it? And say, how about we give you a break of whatever it is, half of 446 or 444, and we help out and you help out?
What would we get in return for that?
Well, yeah, oh, you're asking that to Jesse.
Mr. Not yet, I'm not asking you, actually.
Mr. Wappel, it would have to be his...
What?
Well, I mean, if the project doesn't happen, we get nothing. And, you know, waiving half of it, we would, we would get a payment of $200,000, $222,000 something, but whether the project moves forward or not is up to, I don't pronounce it very, it lasted very well either, even though it was a neighbor. Jesse will have to sort of address whether they feel like they could take that and make it work or not.
Well, how many affordable units would $200,000 buy?
Not even one. If you're talking about how much, like, to build an affordable unit?
No, no.
No, no, of your offer...
I got it, Chris, I got it. No, we're talking about the 444 that you're asking for.
I'm sorry, I muted you by mistake, Madam Mayor. Can somebody unmute the commission? I apologize. William, you see the computer? You could go on unmute. Sorry, I was trying to, I was trying to mute somebody else.
Is that done, Melissa?
Thank you, and I apologize.
That's fine, thank you. You had made a comment, you know, you're asking for $444,000. What if we said $200,000 or $250,000? What, what would we get in, you know, you're saying it'll all be affordable if we give you this money? If you get the county money?
Yeah, we would still be offering exactly what we're currently offering to, which is a fully affordable project. You know, as I said in the beginning, anything would help make the deal work. Unfortunately, we can't really give anything else. This is as low as we're able to go to even come close to making this deal pencil with, you know, rates and costs where they are.
I think the question you're trying to ask is that if the city were to waive $250,000 of that fee versus $440,000, how many of the units would be affordable more so than they are required by the city? Or will your project stay the same as it is proposed now, where they're all deed restricted in some fashion or not, or would some of them have to move to market rate?
Right, thank you.
No, we would keep it all affordable as it is now.
Okay, well, then there's an opportunity here to, you know, split the difference.
Right, and there's also, you know, we will be paying taxes, building permit fees, impact fees, so there is economic benefit outside of the sustainability fee for you all.
Is this a CRA district?
No, it's not. Unfortunately, it's not a CRA. Or fortunately.
Thank you. We love a little ad valorem tax now and then. Mr. Diaz?
I guess the other side of that question too is to William's office, you know, do we need those, like, what's the impact to not getting those fees for our community's sustainability?
Well, that's it, that we have...
Well, how those get dispersed are up to you.
Right.
Yeah.
And many of the initial projects were waived. The last couple of projects, they have not been, and then as, when you came in office, three years ago, at that point, the entirety of the value of a sustainable bonus could be incorporated in a project, and one of the first things you did as a new commission was pass a resolution where half the sustainable bonus value had to be paid to the city versus it being incorporated in the, in the project itself. And so the account doesn't have a ton of money in it. It stands to raise some money as projects come online, but because of interest rates and housing costs, we have a lot of projects, over 1,000 units, that are sort of in abeyance waiting.
What are they waiting for?
They're waiting for the interest rate to drop, possibly the construction costs to come down some, more favorable terms from a bank, the election, whatever happened. I don't know, I don't really know which direction, they let the direction, the election to go, just get it behind us. Maybe like nobody. There was a movie about that. It was great.
Okay, well, was there a motion? We don't know, we're just talking.
No one's made a motion yet.
Okay. I would like to see some money in our coffers, honestly. We're, you know, I would love to be generous and say, sure, take it, but we really, our profit margin is nil. We're not allowed to make a profit. So I'd like to have someone make a suggestion about something.
Yeah, I'd, it seems like you're amenable to hearing the 222 or the half, because I agree, I feel like we're, you know, this is a priority for us. Like, without a doubt, we have, we declared a state of emergency on housing, we've done more between, you know, especially the CRA, we've done more on affordable housing than probably anyone in the area, maybe even a state. But at the same time, we, that couple hundred thousand, I mean, I think you're still going to do well with the project, but I think it would help us tremendously, so like, my emotion would be to do the half, and I would definitely want to commit whatever would be helpful, maybe a letter or...
If we pass it, the action would show to the county.
Right, to show up. So that would, so, yeah.
Okay, so 222?
Move 222.
Second.
You're the math teacher.
Just say half of the request, and we'll, I'll work it out. I'll get with Melissa, and we'll write a letter that commemorates that, and we can have the mayor sign it, and that can be provided to Jesse, so he can take that to the County Board.
Sure. So do we have a motion?
Yeah.
That was a motion.
Motion and a second.
I, I moved, yeah, for the.
And Mr. McVoy, you seconded it?
I did. I did, 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 did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
We wanna see a half of, but we. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Now he owes us a steak dinner.
Oh, no, we have more to go. I keep trying to cut out the last. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, he's real poor.
Okay. Next up, agreement with Brandano Display for downtown decorative lighting and maintenance. Motion?
Second.
All in favor? You're happy with these people, Mr.?
We are. They have been doing it for the last five years.
And what is this, the lights in the trees, and what is?
Yeah, this is, uh, on Lake and Lasserne, like, through the entire downtown corridor.
All the white lights.
Lights, and, yep, um, and we made that move years ago to go to year-round instead of just holiday lighting. And it did increase this year, but the CRA is splitting half the cost with us, so.
All right, so we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, I, one quick question while we're on it, cause you had brought up the idea of, uh, these umbrellas and things for John Rice Way. Would this be the contractor that could help, like?
Figure out how to do it?
How much that would cost?
Um, I'm not sure about the umbrellas, but they do decorative lighting and different, uh, decorative things.
Yeah, we could talk to, about specifically how to do it. Okay. All right. Thank you, yeah. I think, I'd love to do something up on that, that would be so cool. Um, okay, so you have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, so I would really appreciate it if the commissioners, when they're making a motion, make a motion to approve or to disapprove, not just say motion.
Mr. Diaz, was that a motion to approve?
Actually, it was Commissioner.
It was Commissioner May.
Commissioner May.
I apologize, and make a motion to approve the agreement with Brandano Displays, Inc. for downtown decorative lighting and maintenance.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Up next is the last item, which, agreement with, agreement with RDK Assets, truck sales for the rental of waste removal collection vehicles.
Yeah, so what this is, um, Madam Mayor, is the, uh, we're picking back in a contract that Boynton Beach already has in place. We've had issues in the past where, um, you know, we've had heavy equipment go down in our solid waste recycling division, um, and we've had to repurpose vehicles that we currently have, um, to finish routes for that day, or some of those routes get pushed to the following morning. So this would allow us to, if we have a situation where we have multiple trucks out at the same time for transmission or hydraulic, whatever happens to be, this allows us to then basically rent that vehicle.
As needed.
Correct. It's just on as-needed basis, just a kind of a little backup.
How much notice do they have to have?
It stole my question.
It hurts, they're there.
The, the company?
Yeah.
We would just notify, if, if, we, we would know ahead of time when.
We got it, Mr. McVoy.
We would notify them and see what they had available at the time.
For a day or two, we just hope.
Correct, because, uh, the example I'd given before was, um, when our 6040, when our recycling vehicles went down before, um, you know, it's a 6040 divided compartment, one side for the blue, one side for the yellow bin. When that went down, we had to then basically use our rearload vehicles and run a route twice, come through once for the bins, come through a second time for the yellow. We have to get stuff off the ground.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
He's a motion maker.
He's very active today. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night.